7:31, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic-
Let me start that over. Sorry.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, I did notice, once again, Walt, the minutes are underneath the approval of agenda, so we'll have to move that down to C next time. Just FYI. And we do have to move... The Policy 9130 is the first read, so we cannot have Board Action on it. So we could either move it under to the Superintendent's Report as H3 or put it under New Business. So I'll entertain a motion for either.
Christina Plord, I'd like to make a motion to move, actually, both K3 and K4, our first reads, I believe, up to the Superintendent's Report as H3 and H4, respectively.
Jacob Mari, second.
Discussion. Does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss on those movements? I notice everyone's hands are still up, so I'm not seeing any other movement, though. Therefore, we'll do a roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Kate? Kate? I can't hear anything. I see that you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Sure might have technical difficulties. Can you... Is there a way you could put your camera on and give me a thumbs up? We'll try that. Are you still there, Kate?
Why don't I... Let me just see if she's having some...
I noticed that she took her thing off a couple times, but we're still not getting that voice. So there might be a technical...
Yeah, let me see if I can help.
All right, you should be able to hear me.
Okay, I see. So we'll move that, um, the K... To K4, and we'll move those up to the H3 and H4. Okay. Now, we will go to the approval of minutes. Let's do the September 23rd, 2020 minutes first, in case anyone has any changes. I'll entertain a motion.
Jacob Mari, I move that we approve the September 23rd meeting minutes.
Christina Plord, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll do the roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Kate?
Oh, boy. Okay, let's see. I spoke too soon with the technical difficulties. Hold on. Okay, I can't get... Okay, hold on. Is she there?
Wait, you guys couldn't hear me again?
No, couldn't hear you. Now we can.
Aye.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, also, I for the September 23rd minutes. Those are unanimously passed. If we could do the September 30th minutes.
Christina Plord, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 30th minutes.
Jacob Mari, second.
Okay, any discussion at this point? Any blue hands? Anything to change? Okay, we will do the roll call vote. Karen?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Jacob? Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
That worked the first time. Perfect. Also, and I, the minutes are as is and unanimously passes. Let's move to public participation. We will have two minutes, and Tony is not here. Jacob, can you take the two-minute timer? And if everyone speaking could raise their blue hand, and once called upon, please, the... Put your name and your address together, and then you'll have two minutes to speak. At this time, I'd like to open that up. Now, let that go one more time.
Oops. I don't know how to raise my blue hand.
Okay, go ahead, Seale.
Thanks. Looking for my blue hand. I can't... Oh, there it is. Sam Adlerstein, 164 Pine Hill Road. Hi, everybody. I sent a series of emails into the Board, initially titled "Anti-Racism", asking the Board to put on the agenda. I think through the course of emails, the term "anti-racism" may not be the way the Board chooses to enter into the topic, but I would like the Board to enter into that topic and have a discussion about it in any format that you choose, using any language you choose. I think it's an important discussion, hot topic in the world today, and highly relevant to the TALEN Board of Education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else at this time? If you could raise your blue hand, we'll help you through. And we don't have any caller, so we don't have to worry about star nine. So going once. Going twice. We will move on to correspondence. And Tony did say that he sent on Team Jacob. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Should be pretty quick tonight.
The August ones as well?
Yes. He said that I don't need to read those out. I think they're already up in the minutes. I'll just give them to Lisa afterwards.
If you could just go through them... Well, you know, because I would like to have them officially in the... In a meeting, is what I would like. So if you could backtrack, though, go through those quickly, and then we can go on to the previous ones that we just had.
Okay. I think the ones from the previous meetings are in the minutes, because I have them from the 9th of September, the 23rd, and the 26th of August. I've got several pages of them. I can go through them if you want, but there's quite a bit.
I think our constituents deserve to hear their voices.
I would just like to have those officially, like I told them last time. I'd like to have them called into the minutes just so that we have everything together. So if we could just kind of go through it.
Okay, all right. So I'll start with the 26th of August. We had an email requesting that the Board adopt a schedule that begins no earlier than the 8th of September. Author states that families, administrators, and the FRC need time to prepare. An email expressing support with the Superintendent's decision to move forward with partial in-person learning. An email expressing support with the Superintendent's decision to move forward with partial in-person learning. We had an email from a parent moving into the district. Author inquired how and where to register her daughter for the third grade. An email concerning the... Or concerned with the extra cost to parents caused by the half-day kindergarten plan. An email disappointed that parents desiring full-time schooling do not have that option. If PIP is chosen, the author needs their children to be in the Monday, Tuesday option. An email articulating support for a PIP plan that begins on the 8th of September. An email articulating disappointment in the straw poll results. Author supports the PIP plan. An email from two medical professionals with children in the TALEN public school system. Authors are in favor of cohorting children safely. Authors ask how TALEN data will be tracked and what intervals it will be shared. Have an email requesting a start date after Labor Day. An email articulating support for an 8th of September start date. Another email articulating support for the September start date. And another email articulating support for the September 8th start date. An email thanking the Board of Education for their efforts in supporting an 8th of September start date. And an email asking the Board of Education to follow the advice of the administration, focusing on the needs of the entire population rather than those of any specific subgroup. An email from a parent offering support for a later start date. An email asking if TALEN public schools will still have students from other... Or will still have students from other towns. An email asking if the decisions will be discussed with parents through regular means. An email thanking the Board for extending the Evergreen Clause. An email thanking the Board for extending Dr. Willitt's contract. An email requesting that the district make every effort to offer a four-day week. Author believes that learning is damaged through distance learning. An email asking if a Chromebook will be provided for sixth graders. An email asking for further information on kindergarten busing. And an email asking Dr. Willitt and his staff... Or thanking Dr. Willitt and his staff for all the hours of hard work. So that's 26th of August. Next one I have is the 23rd of September.
Okay.
An email asking about availability of district Chromebooks. Email responding to the perceived misrepresentation of the TALEN public school community and lack of civility of Board of Education members. The writer voiced her disappointment over emails sent to Commissioner Cardona. Writer also discusses concern over the lack of accountability measures in the civility clause and suggests the creation of an ethics committee. An email expressing disappointment that most of the meeting on the 26th of August focused on the letter to the Commissioner rather than school reopening. An email articulating difficulties faced by the writer's child with online livestreaming days. Writer asked if first graders could join the kindergarten schedule. The writer asked for a teacher to focus on online learning only. An email requesting that the next evaluation period remain partial in person. An email recommending that the next evaluation period offer a four-day in-school period in addition to partial in-person and full remote. An email offers data to support the benefits of such an option. An email articulating the importance of increasing the number of in-person school days and to articulate the difficulties of teachers attempting to teach both in-person and remote learners. An email thanking Dr. Willitt and the Board for working hard to ensure that the transition into classrooms was as safe as possible. Writer advocates for increasing the numbers of in-person school days. An email asking Dr. Willitt and the Board of Education to wait one more tracking period to allow for impacts created by sports starting before transitioning out of partial in-person. An email advocating for TALEN public schools to offer a five-day in-school option for all students. An email following up on a previous data point concerning families that would move to fully remote learning if the district moved to fully in-person. Writer asks if the Board is following this data and if this has affected their considerations. An email supporting a full reopening of the TALEN public school system. An email supporting a continuance of partial in-person to ensure ongoing health and safety. Writer asks what the process is for cleaning a classroom where a positive contact was... Was. Writer asks if a note can be sent to the students in an infected student's cohort. Writer asks if a process can be put in place to prescreen staff and students via an online app. An email urging the district to stay on a hybrid schedule until we have a better idea of what year will be like. An email asking that the district remain cautious before moving back into full in-person. Writer feels that the current model is working well for their family. An email asking to keep the learning model status quo. An email requesting that elementary-age kids attend school more than two days a week. Writer stresses that her children are experiencing health issues due to the pandemic and long stretch of remaining at home. An email complimenting the Board for their work relating to the community. Writer requests a survey to be sent to parents. An email requests opening school full-time. An email from a writer who articulated stressing the data behind letting children go back to school. Writer thanks the Board of Education for their efforts. The writer then requests that a full, open option be offered so that parents can choose what is best for their families. An email writing to support full reopening during the next phase. Writer discusses concerns with the financial and logistical challenges of the FRC. Writer requests that the Board consider the mental health and financial burdens associated with current educational options. An email requesting that the decision be made solely upon student safety and not on daycare or social aspects. An email concerned by the perceived shortage of paraprofessionals in the town. Writer believes that more effort should be made toward parapay. Writer does not support middle... And does not support middle schoolers and high schoolers going to school full in. An email from a writer that does not believe the time is right to go to full-in-person mode. Writer requests that the PIP option is kept even if a full in is offered. An email articulating the condition of the state area COVID numbers. Writer believes that now is the time for a full-in option. An email stating the safest option is to continue PIP for another 21-day period. An email recommending a four-day or five-day in-person choice. Writer states that the hybrid model is creating undue stress upon our children. An email recommending an increase in the number of in-person school days. Writer sees differences in their children's approach to in-person versus online learning. An email requesting to know what indicators Dr. Willitt uses to determine what course of action to take. An email discussing online discussions about moving from a hybrid model to full-in-person. Writer believes that it is too soon to be making such a decision. An email discussing the writer's belief that the current option be maintained until the end of the quarter. An email articulating the writer's belief that the hybrid model continue. An email stating the writer's belief that the hybrid model provides a balance that keeps the students connected to their teachers and peers while helping to maintain a safe physical distance. Two emails expressing the disappointment that TALEN did not fight for our football team. An email expressing concerns with the condition of schools that the district returns to a full-in-person mode. An email voicing concern if students are rushed into a five-day person mode. An email requesting a continuation of the hybrid model. Writer states that they will find it difficult to synergize at school if full-in-person is offered. An email stressing that things are going well with the hybrid model. An email stating the writer's belief that the current educational model used in TALEN is balanced, prudent, and appropriate. An email expressing the writer's concern for returning to full-in-person. Writer discusses the possible effect on lunch and face shield time. Writer states that the priority of schools to educate and to do so safely. An email asking how desks will be oriented to support social distancing in the case of full-in schooling. An email stating the writer's opposition to full-in learning and preference to remain with PIP. An email asking that Dr. Willitt and the Board trust the survey rather than asking parents to answer a survey and write it into the Board. An email passionately commenting on restrictions to football practices. An email asking for more fiscal support for families struggling under the current model. Writer also requests the district be aware of the weight of students' backpacks during transit. An email expressing disapproval for sending students back to school full-time. An email stressing the need to balance the risk of having students in school full-time with the benefits. Writer stresses that making the safest choice involves recognizing that there is no such thing as absolute safety. Writer shows that current data support that full-in-person education mode is best for the majority of students. Writer urges Board members to be willing to ask tough questions and offer alternatives to the Superintendent's recommendations. An email concerned with the number of paraprofessionals available for the K-4 day in-school option. An email advocating for a four-day in-person option for 6th to 12th grade. Writer points out that the significant benefits for students' mental and emotional health exist for these grades as well. An email requesting specifics on staffing. Writer is concerned that there will be enough... That there won't be enough paras in Birch Grove and TIS to meet 504 and IEP goals. An email requesting answers to how many parapositions remain unfilled? Are the needs of the students being fulfilled? And how does moving to a four-day all-in affect the number of needed paras? That's the longest one. On the 9th of September, 2020, the Correspondence Report is as follows. We had an email grateful to the district for their back-to-school plans. Author then asked questions concerning Ms. Plord's letter to the Governor. Author offers data to contradict statements in the letter. An email offering additional reading to a topic discussed in public participation. An email articulating disappointment in how the Board is conducting business. An email discussing the responsibilities of a Board member and discussing the recent letter written to Commissioner Cardona. Author requests a higher level of civility from Board members. An email discussing the passing of a civility clause and requesting a conversation on the social media policy. An email asks the Board to look at seeds of civility from Ellington. An email lamenting the lack of bipartisanship and questioning the letter sent by members of the Board to the state. And an email disappointed that so much time was spent discussing the letters to the state. And finally, for tonight's meeting, an email asking the Board members to discuss anti-racism during the first point of information period. Author suggests that this statement may help align the Board as it has done in the past. And that's all.
Thank you, Jacob. Now, got to grab a drink of water, but just let's make sure... Lisa, if you're on here, does Tony somehow get these to you?
He usually emails me the list.
Okay, so we'll make sure that we get that list to you.
Thank you.
And then we can go from there. Perfect. Thank you. We'll move to points of information. At this time, if any Board member would like to raise their little blue hand, let's do that and go through. Hey, Kate?
Two quick things. Can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I'm surprised that Jacob gave that list, because I thought that I was going to do it. So that's confusing to me. And second of all, I would just like to respond to Mr. Adlerstein and say that I completely agree. And I, too, am frustrated that we haven't seen any items about anti-racism, inclusion, et cetera, other than the goal discussion, although I am excited about our goal discussion from the other night. That's all I got.
At this time, any other Board members would like to go? Raise your hand. Just a quick thing. Walt, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, there was just... There was a lot there. So I think most of those types of things I have covered in the Superintendent's blog, but if anyone has any direct question, I'll answer it. But I think that that was those... That spans such a long span of time that it kind of is answered by some of the things that have happened since, type of thing.
I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, so I was just giving you the opportunity. I know that you'll discuss a little bit more in terms of the anti-racism and coming up with that for one of the future meetings, of putting all that together, because that's something that you're working on diligently after all this COVID stuff, too. Thank you. And honestly, I got just a quick message from Tony saying that he sent everything to Jacob, and therefore, I just went with that, because he just said he couldn't go to Communications and this meeting tonight. And I let Karen and Dr. Willitt know about the Communications not being able to attend as well. So I did send that out. We can go to Student Representative Report. So we have...
Ashley, I had my hand up.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry, Karen. Go ahead.
Sorry. Just quickly, on the racial issues. You guys know I did send you an email about it, but I just want to say that I think this should be a Board discussion. And when I was asking in the email was not really implying to have Dr. Willitt respond, because he's doing his own thing as superintendent in the schools, but my intent and hope was that we would have a Board discussion about what we're going to do and what our intentions are as a Board, which is different than what the Superintendent is doing. So I just want to be clear about that, because it's not just pass the buck to Dr. Willitt. We should be working with him together on this, and we, as a Board, should have a commitment to something. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, no, and I understand what you're saying. However, I think the Board needs an understanding of where everything lies right now with him getting the grants for the, you know, skills for adolescents class and things of that nature in order for the Board to have a robust talk about what is happening in the school system. So that's how...
That's fine, and it's a much fairer discussion than that. Those are things that we're doing in the school system. It's more of a discussion about the Board as a whole.
Okay. Well, thank you, Karen. Let's move to Alexandra in Summer.
Hi, everyone. So Student Council has quite a bit going on right now. We're working on finalizing Mental Health Week. The speaker that we had planned, we're going to push back just a little bit so we can make sure that all high school students have equal access to that. So the kids that are completely online are... We don't want to not have anyone have access to that, so we're going to push it later into the year. So we're focusing on mental health throughout the entire year anyway, so we're definitely going to find a good time to put that in. But for now, we're having... We're going to have our normal, like, breathing exercises in the morning. We're decorating the school. We're going to have a bunch of conversations about that, and that's at the end of October.
And seniors took their SATs on September 23rd, and it was optional, but we're getting our results tomorrow. And obviously, it might be, like, really important for some seniors and their college decisions. And also, we basically agree with, like, we need to have more discussion in the Board related to race-related things. It's such a big, like, topic right now. And obviously, it will eventually be, and it's not something that we can ignore for too long.
All right, thank you, ladies. That's great. I mean, you got a lot of stuff going on. I can't believe you get your results already. I mean, that's pretty fast. I feel like you guys just said that you were getting prepped to take them. So thank you, guys, very much for everything. And let's move down to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Willitt?
Okay, so the first item tonight on the... Oops. Yeah, good. The first item tonight in the Superintendent's Report is the Roles and Responsibilities Presentation by Jessica Ritter. We all know Jessica Ritter as our... One of our Shipman and Goodwin representatives, and she is amazing, so we're lucky to have her tonight. Thank you, Jessica, for coming. What I'm going to do, Jess, is I'm going to transfer the hostship to you, but the very first thing I'm going to do is just mute all to make sure that I give you a clear room of fully muted individuals, and then you can grant, you know, grant the mic to whomever, okay?
Sure, thank you.
All right, so let's... We'll just get that started. First, I'm going to mute all, and... Okay. And handing it over to you, Jess. Let's see.
Walt, I'm sorry. It said that you have disabled the ability to share the screen.
Okay, didn't... Did not do that. Okay, I totally did not do that. Hold on one sec. Let me work it out. Can you raise your blue hand there? Attorney Ritter and I will...
Raise my blue hand?
Yeah, do you know how to do that?
I don't see a blue hand, no.
All right, then, don't worry about that.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm just going to move it on over to you. Hold on. There we go.
Okay. So, Walt, I guess the only thing I would say is... And I, just to ask, I guess, the Board Chair, I know that there were several people as part of this meeting. The presentation is meant to be interactive, though, with the Board members, and so I just would want the Board members, of course, if you have any questions as we proceed through the presentation, that they be able to unmute themselves to ask those questions.
I just want to unmute myself, and we are a fan of the blue hands, so we should be good. As long as I have my little list here, I can call on whoever might have a question.
Okay, perfect. So Ashley, you'll take care of that.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you very much. So let me share the screen here and just pull up the presentation.
The only thing is, Jess, you are host now, so they just... They can unmute themselves, but if anybody has trouble, you might have to unmute them.
Got it. So can everyone see the presentation? Yes, okay. Okay, so thank you, Dr. Willitt, for the introduction. I'm Jessica Ritter, an attorney with Shipman and Goodwin, and I am delighted to be here this evening with our Board members. And I do apologize to the other audience members, because I do think this will be a comprehensive presentation that may last some time. So I've been asked today to speak with our Board members about practical tips on how to become a more informed Board member. The Board members will see that I... My intent is for this to be as interactive as possible. I recognize that may be difficult, given that we are doing this virtually, but I have built in a lot of scenarios to hopefully encourage and foster some discussion about some general scenarios and issues that you, as a Board, may face and that other Boards across the district tend to grapple with. across the district tend to grapple with as well. So the agenda for tonight will be to discuss the roles and responsibilities of our board members, what the overlap and the interplay is with our chief executive officer, which is our superintendent of schools, Dr. Willett. Some board meeting essentials, so we'll do some basic review of FOIA. I know that for some of you, you've been on the board for quite some time, but I promise that every time I give a presentation like this, even the most veteran board members walk away saying, huh, I did, I did learn something. So that is the goal for tonight. And then we'll talk about basic, you know, conduct at a meeting throughout the presentation. So let's start with the responsibilities of the board, and then, of course, Ashley, stop me at any time if anyone does raise their blue hand or if anyone wants to ask questions. So as you know, you are an agent of the state. So what does that mean? So we have a Connecticut constitution that delegates its authority to our Connecticut legislature to make decisions with respect to public education. Our legislature has delegated much of that responsibility to our local and regional boards of education, and therefore you serve as an agent of the state. Clearly, within the last couple of years, the legislature has increasingly encroached on the autonomy of our local and regional boards of education, which we can certainly talk about later in the presentation. One of the most important and influential roles that I would say that you have as board members is that you are policymakers for the school district. So I imagine that you have a policy subcommittee. Is that correct? And who right now serves on that committee?
I do. Tony Holt is the chairperson, and Christina Plort is also on it. We did not meet last, well, we met last time, but not two times ago.
Okay, so you have four members, Kate?
No, we have three.
You have three members, okay. And so with your policy meeting, is it your standard procedure that typically either the superintendent of schools or one of the board members would introduce policy and you do a basic two readings and then you present it to the full board for approval? Or what's your basic process?
That's got it.
So in terms of policy, do you see your role as Board of Education members as being more broad-based or more detailed-oriented? What would you say your role is as board members with respect to policy?
The policy committee is extremely detail-oriented. That's how it's been functioning under Tony's chairmanship.
Okay. So I would say that with respect to policies, are you also involved in making administrative regulations? Or you just focused more broadly on the policy and then delegating discretion to our superintendent and to our administration as to how they want to implement your policy on a day-to-day basis? I'd say we're focused more on policy, and then Dr. Willett implements the administrative regulations. Yeah, and so that's really helpful, and that's really the way that a policy committee should function, right? So you want to look at kind of the broad, overreaching issues, but we want to give our superintendent and our administration enough flexibility to implement the policy on a day-to-day basis because obviously you're not part of those operational day-to-day decision-making. You're more concerned about making sure that we're in compliance with any state or federal law, making sure that there are regulations that embody the principles of your policy, but then we want to make sure that our administration has discretion and flexibility with respect to the regulations and how they impact our school on a daily basis. And so you really kind of, you want to be much more broadly focused when you're looking at policies. And policies have changed a lot, and so you'll see that in when I talked about the legislature, you know, increasingly getting more involved in education, you know, I would say that over the last decade, the legislature has mandated several policies that a board of education must adopt, and they leave you very little room to have any discretion. And so that's why it's, it's very important that the policy committee make sure that all of our policies are up to date because the legal landscape is evolving rapidly, and they don't leave a lot of room for a lot of discretion. So for instance, our DCF policy, there absolutely is no discretion for Board of Education to make any amendment or revisions to a DCF policy, and so that's why it would be very important that every year you make sure that something like your DCF policy, which we have to follow to the letter of the law, is up to date because there are amendments made to a policy like that on an annual basis.
Yeah, can I, I'm sorry, can I? I was just going to ask Ashley if she could please ask Tony to watch this presentation since he's the chair of the policy committee.
I'm sure, I'm sure he will review it. That's one of his things that he likes to do is to make sure that he has all the information he needs.
Yeah, and I'm also happy to spend, you know, time talking with Tony or meeting with the policy committee as well. So, you know, the other thing that I would say, one of your other chief, oh, and it looks like Christina raised her hand. I didn't mean to cut you off, Jessica. No, absolutely, no. I agree, too. Oh, you didn't see my hand, Ash?
No, because it goes alphabetically, so I didn't see that.
I think, when I think about our policy committee, I do feel that we are detail-oriented. We do have our list in terms of compliance, you know, what policies do we need to keep updated in regards to what the state's giving us? And then we have, you know, another list, you know, that we haven't even gotten to everything yet, of things that may need updating or, you know, things that we want to talk about. So as detail-oriented as we are, I think we're staying in compliance with the state, but maybe we are, maybe we do need to be a little bit more broad. So just throwing that out there. Yeah, no, Christina, that's excellent. So just so you know, and I raised the policy issue because I don't, I don't remember, I don't know that you subscribe to our model policies, Dr. Willett. Or do you? Oh, you're on mute, Dr. Willett?
Yes, we, we do subscribe to SNG's model policies. We do, we do use them.
Okay, so the good thing about that is that we're always going to give you what you're legally required to have, and we're always going to make sure that you're in compliance with policies where you have very little discretion. So let's, I keep using the DCF as example, but that's a policy where I don't want you to ever really veer away from what we have vetted and what we're providing you. However, let's say something like student discipline. So student discipline is a perfect example where you're going to have a broad policy that mirrors 10-233D, which governs our student discipline policies, but then you're going to have regulations that you allow our superintendent and our administration to implement, and those regulations are going to give some flexibility. And so with respect to regulations and student discipline, our administration actually, actually can have a fair amount of flexibility because state law provides for a fair amount of flexibility. However, our policy should make sure that we mirror with the mandates of 10-233D. And then we want to make sure that we have our regulations that are flexible enough so that our superintendent has, and our administration have the appropriate authority over discipline issues that we wouldn't want our Board of Education members to get overly involved in, right? Because ultimately, and we'll talk about this a little bit later in the presentation, that's a role where we have to rely on our administration. It's part of their day-to-day operations. And then if ultimately, under the law, there are a few reasons where we would have to bring a mandatory or discretionary expulsion to your attention, we need to make sure that you have not been overly involved in the weeds on that issue because you essentially have to sit as an impartial kind of judge and jury on student discipline matters. So that's why it's very important to have that divide between our superintendent and our administration and our Board of Education members. And so that's just one example where we have to make sure there's a distinction between the roles, which gets me into.
I want to stop you for one minute because Lauren has her blue hand up, and Griffin said that she's trying to get in.
Yeah, so now that you're.
I will admit her right now. I'm sorry, I am the host. So I've admitted Griffin.
And it's weird because usually when the blue hands go up, they pop up to the top, but they aren't right now.
Okay.
It's kind of scrolling, so. Board members, if you could just do an actual visual of raising your hand, that might be more helpful at this time. Okay, everybody? Thank you.
Okay, so the other thing that I think is really.
Karen still had the question.
Oh, Karen has a question. I'm sorry, Karen.
That's okay, sorry. I'm raising my hand, blue hand.
Well, I can't see you, Karen, because of the way.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. I think you already answered this, but I was, I was going to ask, who should initiate changes in policy?
So I think that's a great question. I mean, typically, I would say that a lot of the policy is going to be that our superintendent of school proposes those policies in our administration because we're going to look at them as our educational experts. And I don't mean to say that I don't think that all of you are very highly qualified to also present policy, and I know that some of you are educators. So it certainly would be appropriate at some times for a Board of Education member, particularly if you're on the policy committee, to make a presentation to the policy committee that would ultimately be subject to the approval of the board. But I would say that what I tend to see, the trend being, is that the superintendent and the administration are the ones who make policy recommendations ultimately to the board, and then you go through the committee process and then back to the full board for their final approval.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the other things that I think is, is critical for you to remember is that your one employee is the superintendent of schools. And then we rely on our superintendent of schools, who by statute is defined as the CEO of our school district operations, to really oversee every other employee in our school. Now, obviously, we have a hierarchy, but I mean that the superintendent is your only employee in that we never want to be in a situation where our Board of Education is evaluating or making performance-based decisions related to anyone other than our superintendent of schools. So for instance, if we have board members, and I'm just using this as an example, nothing specific here, who, let's say, did not like an administrator or found that an administrator was ineffective, it would not be appropriate for our board members to evaluate or discuss the ineffectiveness of that administrator in a board meeting. What would be far more appropriate would be that when we evaluate our one employee, the superintendent of schools, part of the evaluation could be asking questions about how do you deal with underperformers? Or did you effectively evaluate all your staff? How did you, superintendent of schools, deal with some of the deficiencies that we believe exist among, you know, some of your administrative staff, just to use an example? So that's very, very important. You, with your superintendent, as you know, you legally, on an annual basis, have an obligation to evaluate your superintendent of schools. And then I know, I believe that you all know that under 10-157, our superintendent of schools can never have a contract that runs longer than three years, and that's a legal requirement. And so you can't have an evergreen clause associated ever with a superintendent's contract.
So that's longer than three years.
That's longer than three years, exactly right.
To clarify, yeah. Don't freak out about that.
Yeah, no. Let me just say, you've always been in compliance. I don't raise that to say that you've been out of compliance with that, but I just wanted everyone to understand that.
Right.
So, you know, some of the other duties that I think that you need to be mindful is obviously you have an obligation to preserve confidentiality. So in your role, you are naturally going to get some information that is confidential, either related to students or to employees. And you might receive that information in an appropriately convened executive session, either to discuss a confidential student matter or confidential employment matter or through an attorney-client communication, which I know that we have all done before. It's critical that we preserve the confidentiality so that we don't leave that executive session and we share any of that information. And I say that because let's say if, and I know some of you have sat in, in a student expulsion hearing, let's say you are receiving information about a family in there, right? So we have an obligation to make sure that we're not disclosing any of the information that we receive in that executive session in our capacity as a board member. If we do, that could, and let's say it is then later stumbled upon by that family that we have disclosed confidential student information in violation of our executive session requirements and also in violation of FERPA, which is our Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, we could be subjected to an investigation by a federal agency that oversees FERPA, and we could ultimately have federal funding taken away from us. And so it's not just a matter of an honor code, which of course, I know we all have integrity and we're all professionals, but it's not just a matter of saying, I have integrity, so I won't disclose this information. You also could subject the district to liability, and you also potentially could subject yourself to individual liability if someone felt that you were reckless in the way that you re-disclose that information. So we have to take these obligations very seriously. You know, then obviously, I would say, you know, most of you run because you either have children in the system or you have a real connection to the community, maybe you went to the Talon Public Schools. And so obviously, you know, that's, that's probably why most of you ran, and that's a really important component, you know, that community connection with being a board member. And then, of course, you know, you're probably where you have some of the greatest autonomy is with your school budget. Obviously, we know that you're subject to an annual appropriation every year, but then once you have that annual appropriation, you, the Board of Education, have significant autonomy in how you allocate that appropriation. And so I know sometimes there are, and I wouldn't say in Talon, but just in general in my experience, sometimes there is this tension between the town and the board and how we spend our money, but ultimately, you get the appropriation and it's up to you how you allocate that appropriation. So let's talk a little bit about your, your rights as a board member. So sometimes I've encountered board members who think that because they are a board member, they should have access to information that the common citizen would not have access to, and that is not always correct. So for instance, if I am a board member and I said, I want to know every student in the high school who was disciplined and received a suspension in the last year, I don't have the right to that information because that is confidential student information, and just because I'm a board member doesn't mean that I get access to confidential student information that isn't part of a confidential student hearing that I've been asked to serve as an impartial judge on. And so sometimes I think that people have expectations that they should be privy to information that they actually have no right to have. And in that circumstance, if we got a request for information like that, I would say to Dr. Willett, we have to treat them like we would treat any other citizen who would request that information, and it would be unlawful to provide that information. You know, there, there are sometimes, for those of you who are parents, I know sometimes there's a question of, if I am a parent, am I still able to advocate for my child? And sometimes, is there an appearance of impropriety if I'm advocating for my child? And I will say this, absolutely not. Just because you are a Board of Education member doesn't mean that you shed your rights to be a parent and to be an actively involved parent who may zealously advocate on behalf of their child. Where we're going to have a problem, and I'll give you an example, is when a board member uses their position to try to advantage their child or advantage maybe someone else in the school system. So perfect example is I had a Board of Education member who appropriately asked to speak to a high school principal because she was not happy with the way that the high school principal had dealt with something with her son. You absolutely have every right to do that because any parent would reach out to a high school principal to say, may we have a discussion? In the meeting, though, she did not like the answer she continued to receive, and she said, I'm going to tell the board about this, and at the next meeting, we're going to discuss your response to this and how utterly disgusted I am with your response to this. And so just, I'd love to get your feedback as to whether or not you think there's a concern there and why that's problematic.
No one else is going to jump in? Okay, go ahead. If I saw Jacob's hand go up, Jacob.
Okay.
Then forward.
Yeah, no, I'd find that problematic. You're blackmailing an administrator.
Okay, Karen? Just, you know, there's a lot of hands, so we'll just kind of go through.
I was just going to say, I think it's important as a parent to rely on proper channel of communication and proper channels of, you know, if it's. if it's the teacher, you communicate with the teacher. And if you're not happy with the teacher's answer or whatever, you know, you go to the administrator. But, um, taking it to that level is inappropriate.
You know, the other problem with that is, you're in essence, one, you're evaluating an administrator that you have no legal right to evaluate, because your one employee is a superintendent of schools. Two, remember, if I'm gonna ever discuss an employee at a meeting, I have to legally post as such, so it would have to be that I legally posted discussion concerning the performance of the high school principal. And I'd have to let the high school principal know, under FOIA, that I would be discussing his performance. So one, it would never get that far, because we would tell them it's absolutely inappropriate and not within your purview to evaluate that administrator. But two, the only legal way to have that discussion would be through the personnel exception under FOIA, and you'd have to notify the individual that you were doing that. And so you can see that there's a whole host of issues with that. But I raised the point because I think sometimes, and, and I'm a parent too, so I, I think sometimes it's easy to lose ourselves in the heat of a moment when we're advocating for our child and sometimes using our position irresponsibly. The other thing that we want to be mindful of, um, is ethics complaints could be filed against you. And so, um, you know, I don't know if your town has an ethics board. Most cities and towns do have a separate, um, ethics board, but certainly-
We had a request to do one. We don't, we have an ethics board that just deals with financial ethics. But we've had a couple-
Financial ethics?
A couple of, of responses and requests from folks who wrote to us, asking us for ethics committee as well.
So I would say that with an ethics committee, I don't know of many boards of education that have their own ethics committee. What it is, is mostly that the town or the city, either through their charter, have established, um, an ethics committee. And then I know in this situation, this principal thought long and hard about whether or not he should pursue that avenue at the town level. He chose not to. But it, but it's not unheard of for if board members use their position inappropriately or to gain financially from their position, um, that if you have a separate standalone ethics committee through the town, that, um, complaints can be filed there. So I just raised that.
Kristen Griffin has her hand up as well.
Oh, sure.
Hi, um, sorry I was late.
Oh, it's okay.
Quick question, um, as far as the administration, what if there was a situation where you had people reach out to you because they weren't happy with an administrator? Do we just tell them then to reach out to Dr. Willett themselves? Do we have any sort of obligation to kind of fill Dr. Willett in, that there's some concerns? Or do we just kind of say, you, you handle it, I'm not involved?
Yeah, it really has to be that Dr. Willett handles it. And so I know you get those questions all the time, and I know it's frustrating to have to give your constituent, or maybe a colleague or a friend, that response. But we really have to be mindful that there are appropriate channels of communication. And so the problem is this, Christine, and we talk about this a little bit later on. But here's the problem. Let's say someone brings to your attention that you have an administrator who's underperforming. And you get so intimately involved, and you're working behind the scenes to raise the issue that this is an underperformer. If this administrator is either disciplined or ultimately evaluated out, he or she is going to have a statutory right to challenge that decision. And guess who ultimately sits as judge and jury of that decision? The Board of Ed. And so if they can make the argument that our Board of Ed was so intimately involved in evaluating me, or, um, you know, uh, getting involved in any kind of level of discipline or working very closely with the superintendent of schools on this, or having constant communication with parents, and we didn't follow the appropriate channels, it could mean that you're forced to recuse yourself from any type of hearing. And if there are too many of you that have to recuse yourself, then we're gonna have a problem, because then the administrator can argue, I can't get a fair bite at the apple, because all of these board members were too involved, micromanaged the situation, and then we ultimately either would be forced to hold on to an underperformer that we don't want to, because we haven't gone through the appropriate channels, or we're paying this person a lot of money to, to separate, um, ways. And so we have to be really, really careful, and we have to trust in our superintendent of schools that they're gonna handle the situation appropriately. So the point would be absolutely to bring it to Dr. Willett's attention. Now, as I said earlier, and Christine, I know you weren't here for it, it doesn't mean that if we feel that there have been a lot of complaints, or if we have, um, clear data and evidence to suggest that maybe at the high school level, student achievement has struggled year after year, if we feel that our superintendent of schools has not appropriately addressed that or not appropriately addressed an underperformer, we can hold our superintendent of schools accountable for that. So that's how you have to look at it.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add in, um, there is a ethics commission in the town of Tallinn. There's three members that are appointed by the town council. So there's a chair, a member, and a secretary that are on there.
Yeah, and that's very standard, Ashley, that it would be that a town or city has that. They operate as a separate entity, which makes sense, because I think it would be difficult for a Board of Ed to sit a, a judge and jury of its own colleagues, right? Because there could be an appearance of conflict there, an appearance of impropriety. So you want it to be a standalone, neutral entity. But I raised the issue because I just want you to know that as essentially town officers, you can be subjected to ethics complaint if you use your role inappropriately.
And Kate has her hand up.
Sure.
So I just wanted to clarify that again, that that ethics committee just deals with financial impropriety. The, the desire that we heard from, from our constituents was specifically with regard to social media impropriety. So that's just, I'm just getting that, like, kind of out there.
Yeah.
And we do not have that.
So Kate, when you say social media impropriety, are you talking about having a social media policy for Board of Ed members?
That's correct. That's what we've been asked to do.
Okay. So to me, that's not necessarily meaning you need a standalone ethics committee, because the policy committee can certainly address, um, a social media policy for board members. And in fact, built into this presentation, I have a model social media policy, because this question has come up a lot, with how can I be, and this ties in nicely to my free speech, how can I be a Board of Education member, but also balance that with my First Amendment rights? So I guess I would ask the question, do you, so you currently do not have a social media policy?
Correct.
And, and what is, um, do we have many people on the board who are very active with social media?
There are a few.
Okay. And so here's the question. When you're on social media, you certainly have the right to engage in social media. You certainly have the right to, um, speak your mind, obviously, within reason. And, and I know that, that you would. And when I say within reason, we wouldn't engage in hateful, uh, speech, right? Because that's, that would be problematic. But I think what we have to be mindful of is, when I'm on social media, I'm, I'm on social media as Jessica Ritter, not Jessica Ritter, a Tallinn Board of Education member. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I have to make that very clear, that I, what I'm saying on social media does not reflect the Board of Education. So that's really important, whether it's social media, whether I'm writing to the newspaper, whether I'm sending any kind of communication, that I'm making it clear that I'm writing it as myself. Unless, and I say this because what tends to happen, so let's say if, if the Board of Ed decides that they want to respond to something, um, so for instance, I had a Board of Education where one of the board members filed a FOIA complaint, um, against the rest of the board. And the rest of the board felt very strongly that they wanted to say something in response to that. The problem is that they needed to speak through one voice. And in order to do that, we had to hold a meeting so that the full board could say, I give the authority for the chairperson to speak on behalf of the board and say X, Y, and Z in response to the complaint. Because without that authority, the chairperson would be essentially speaking on behalf of the board, but didn't actually have the authority from the board to make a statement in response to the FOIA complaint. And so we, we have to be very mindful that if we're speaking as a board, we want to make sure that Ashley has been given that authority to speak on behalf of the board. And again, it could be that a majority prevails and gives Ashley that kind of authority. But if I'm speaking as an individual, I want to be clear that I'm speaking as Jessica Ritter and not as a member of the Tallinn Board of Education.
Just, uh, Attorney Ritter, to be, um, to be specific, just, we have a policy for social media for personnel, but not for board members.
So let me-
Just to clarify.
Yeah, let me just jump ahead real quick. So here, just to jump ahead, because we do talk about social media. I have a few scenarios that talk about social media, because this situation's coming up a lot. But here are some social media considerations, a code of conduct for board members, because a lot of Board of Education members have reached out to me to say, you know, do you think it makes sense for us to have a social media policy? And I think it does, because like I said, we want to balance your right to engage in social media, but we want to be mindful that you're elected officials. You are held to a higher standard than most people. People are looking to you to lead. And so here are some social media considerations that if you wanted to consider for a policy, you certainly could. But you can see that we say that you're gonna adhere to all of your policies and regulations. So again, we want to be mindful, you want to be very mindful of your bylaws and your policies, um, and so that you're not acting, uh, out of compliance. You want to conduct yourself fair and impartially. You want to refrain from interfering with the implementation of a board policy decision by the administration. So I think we want to be very mindful that, I'm not saying that you don't have a First Amendment right to, to be critical, but I think you want to think about your role and your job as the employer. And so we want, we would want to refrain from sort of attacking the administration of the superintendent online. And I'm not saying that happens here in Tallinn, but I've seen that happen in other places. And we certainly want to refrain from anything that could be construed as slanderous, discriminatory, obscene, or threatening toward any student or school district in our social media communication. So these are just some general principles to live by. I, I do think it's, it's important to consider. And so this is part of the presentation, if you want to, uh, take a further look at it. And there are some boards of education who have adopted a similar policy.
And Dana has her hand up.
Sure.
Hi, Jessica, thank you so much for your time.
Oh, my pleasure.
But I had my blue hand up and my regular hand, so. Thanks, Ashley. Um, so Jessica, I just have a few questions, um, in regards to this, and I don't want to kind of veer off.
Yeah.
But for example, we've had, as Ashley has mentioned, we do, um, have several members who are quite vocal on social media, um, in multiple capacities. And we have several members that are minimal or not at all being, uh, on social media or engaging in social media. So some examples of what I've seen on social media from board members are ranging anywhere from, I'm gonna list a few things, and if you could kind of-
Sure.
Give me an idea. So some have posted minute meetings, meeting minutes, or posted that we're having a meeting tonight, or a video of a meeting. Though we've had others that have solicited information about, hey, how do you think this is working in the Tallinn public school systems? We've had other responses, um, saying negative things about administrator, administrative staff. We've had posts where multiple board members and other board and commission members have responded and engaged in continuous conversation, some of it pleasant, some of it not so pleasant. So I think that's kind of where I get concerned with social media, because we have a variety of different ways of communicating. There's also, um, some board members that'll say, I'm writing this as Dana Philbin, not Board of Education member. This is what I think about, dah 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 dah. So again, I, I understand that you're talking about our, our personal rights. But also, like, I still wear the hat as a Board of Education member. I still wear all my titles, no matter what I'm doing, right? Mom, and, you know, manager, leader, Board of Ed member, whatever, wife, so on and so forth. So at all times, I have to be cognizant of all those titles that I have. And I know I have to be very acute, I have to be acutely aware of what I can be free speech and what I can't. So I guess those are some of the variety, and I probably didn't get them all. But I think that's where, um, things get muddy, and I get concerned as a Board of Education member, as also as a community member, um, because we do have some folks in our community that are young adults, that are still in our schools, that are also reading some of these, some of this information. Which again, I feel, you know, a lot of it is, people are caring and believing that they're doing the right thing to speak and get the word out. But as we were talking before, there's a lot of, there's a, when we're talking about policy, there's proper channels than procedures. So I think in the same aspect, social media and code of conduct for board members in regards to that. So I'm sorry, it was kind of a long-winded question, and it kind of was all over the place, but-
No, so I think you raise excellent questions. I want to break it down a little bit. So we have to remember that social media, I, I know the legal landscape has not caught up to where we are, social media-wise. So I can't tell you that there is a bright line rule between what is protected by your First Amendment versus what is getting into an area where we want to refrain from. So one, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis analysis, and two, a lot of it's gonna be common sense. But here's my, here's, I'm gonna break down a few things that you said, Dana. One, if I'm posting meeting minutes, and those meeting minutes have been officially approved, that's a public document. So I don't have a problem with a Board of Education member sharing meeting minutes that would ultimately be subject to FOIA, that is ultimately a public document, or sharing things that were actually contained in the minutes in social media. Because to me, that's, I'm sharing information that was already presented at a public meeting. Now, of course, if that's information from an executive session, like an attorney-client communication, we have a real problem. If that is just information that has already been presented at a public meeting, I don't have a problem with that. I, I would be very concerned if I'm going on social media, and whether I'm saying I'm speaking as Jessica Ritter as an individual or a board member, everyone knows I'm a board member. If I'm saying something very negative about an administrator, that's problematic for a variety of reasons. So one, it's problematic from the standpoint of, as a board member, you're not in a position to evaluate someone who isn't the superintendent of schools. But irrespective of that, that administrator can come after you for slander or defamation. And as board members, you do have broad statutory protection under the indemnification statute, so 10-235, which would say that if I'm acting through the scope of my responsibilities and I'm making good faith-based decisions, and we're sued, I'm gonna be protected, because I can demonstrate that I acted in good faith and I wasn't reckless or negligent in carrying out my responsibilities. Therefore, if you're sued as a board, we're going to indemnify you, which means your attorney's fees are covered, meaning the district pays for your attorney's fees. You're gonna be covered. However, you will not be covered if you are sued for defamation and you are attacking an administrator or superintendent or another school employee. You will not be covered if, if the argument can be made that you were reckless in your comments, and that they would constitute a reckless disregard for the truth. And so board members need to be really mindful of that, that if we are attacking employees, you could be sued for that, and we would not have to indemnify you for that, because it could be construed as reckless and negligent misconduct on your part, and therefore you could be sued in your individual capacity. So I want to be very careful about that. With some of the other stuff, it's really a matter of common sense. I think if you have a policy, like the one that I have here on the screen, then I think that, you know, if, if Ashley felt that someone was violating this policy, if you had adopted it, now you'd have something that you can point to, to say, look, I recognize you have your First Amendment rights. However, it is interfering or serving in direct contrast to what we have in this policy. And I'm not suggesting that you have to adopt this policy or adopt it verbatim, but it would give Ashley and the rest of the board an ability to call out a board member who may be acting in a manner inconsistent with some of the principles that are identified here.
We do have a couple more board members with their-
Sure.
Reenie?
Hi, Jessica, so a couple of questions.
Sure.
I, um, personally don't spend a lot of time posting on social media and that type of thing, but some of, one of my concerns around a, a policy per se is how do you enforce it? Number one. Because no one's gonna get kicked off or, or anything like that, because we can't do that. Because no one's going to get kicked off or anything like that, because we can't do that. And number two, you know, you know how social media works, right? There's pages where people are blocked from seeing and so forth, and there's all kinds of back conversation going on, you know, and then you find out about it, whatever. I mean, so I feel like it would be absolutely impossible to enforce it, because, I mean, just because of those reasons. And also, you know, fair and impartial is kind of subjective, depending on, you know, the person, right? So I think those are some of my concerns. I'm not saying I wouldn't think it might be a good idea, I just feel like it would be tough, because who's going out and policing all these pages? And I can't see the pages that these people are posting on and all the things, but then you hear on the back door, oh, there's, you know, people are saying this, that, and the other. So to me, it becomes very unwieldy and time-consuming, perhaps. So I don't know-
No, Rini, I think that's an excellent question. And like I said, it doesn't mean, I'm not telling you you cannot post. I'm not telling you that you can't be critical of the school budget. I'm not telling you can't be critical of the town budget. I'm saying we have to use common sense and draw distinction between attacking, right? Just to use Dana's example, attacking an administrator, or saying things that could be viewed as inflammatory or obscene in any manner, or anything that may really impact or give liability to the board. So let me give you an example. So I was in a situation where there was a superintendent of schools that the board was having difficulties with. We were in the midst of very contentious negotiations to try to separate ties with this employee. The community was very involved on a social media site and kept coming for the board members. So I want you to understand, I'm sensitive to what you have to deal with as an elected official when you have very angry constituents. And this one board member, who had been in all these executive sessions and was getting information and updates about the employment status, felt so overwhelmed by some of the attacks on social media, that he responds, don't worry, everyone, we're very close to reaching a resolution, we're getting her to resign. And he said something else that was not flattering. So what do you think happened as a result of him posting that on social media in response to all of the critiques of the Board of Ed?
Yeah, I would say that the employee was, well, within their rights. Yeah, you can't do that.
Oh, right. So that's what, so we then ended up having to pay a lot more to separate ties with that employee than we otherwise would. And what happened to that board member, and you're exactly right, you don't have the ability to unseat someone, they're an elected official. But you do have the ability through Robert's Rules to censure the individual, and I recognize that that's nothing more than a public reprimand, but that's impactful. And your chair has the right to strip anyone of any type of committee roles and other roles on the committee if they feel that they are constantly and knowingly and intentionally in violation of a board policy. So, Rini, I get what you're saying, and I don't think that people should go trolling for people who are on social media.
Right.
But sometimes having a policy gives your board chair and your other board members a way of saying, look, enough's enough, this is really inappropriate behavior, it's really beneath you, it's really beneath the board, and as a result, and I've talked to you and you're not correcting it, and as a result, now I'm going to strip you of your memberships on these committees, and we may go through the Robert's Rules censure process. So there are things you can do, and then you would have the policy to rely on to do that, if this is really a problem for you guys. And I don't know if it is.
Yeah, I'm not, I just, as we've talked about it, so those are some of the things that have, I've wondered about, I think there's, yeah.
But that makes sense to me, but that's the value that I see in the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Let's go to Plord next, she has her blue hand up.
I was just going to ask, I think Dr. Willett probably sent you our civility policy. Although it doesn't point to social media directly, I think the civility policy includes a lot of what's here-
Yeah.
-in the 1 through 6. I just don't see the need to add another policy that, you know, like Rini said, isn't enforceable per se. But as far as, you know, the public reprimand, I mean, I guess I feel that, you know, from things that I've posted online or have even said in meetings. I think some of the ethics questions come from a letter that I wrote to the governor, and that was signed by, you know, other Republicans in the caucus, and nobody outside of the caucus. So I got a ton of emails about illegal caucusing. So I was hoping you could kind of elaborate on, is there such thing as an illegal caucus? Or would it just be an illegal meeting if something goes outside of that?
Yeah, so with respect to a caucus, if it's just the, you know, if you're split among Republican and Democratic lines, and you, Republican caucus, meet as a caucus, and you decide that you want to issue something and write something to the governor, you are free to do that. That is not an illegal meeting. What would make it an illegal meeting is if you invited anyone who's not part of the Republican Party to do that. So if you invited Dr. Willett, who is neutral and not a board member, or if you invited me, you've waived your right to caucus. So that does not violate FOIA, because you are entitled to do that. I don't want you, though, to think that everything you create in your caucus is not subject for public consumption, right? So that's, so, but it sounds like what you did was you wrote a letter, and then you sent it to the governor, and then did you sign it that it's, you're speaking on behalf of the caucus, which had authorized you to send it?
The members of my caucus signed it, and then we were accused of having, you know, an illegal meeting, so that was-
Yeah, so I would say that's not an illegal meeting. And what you did there, it sounds like, is you weren't speaking on behalf of the full board. You were speaking on behalf of your caucus.
Yes. So then my second question for you is, and this was part of the reason I didn't respond to an email from the minority caucus, is that there was requests for things to be put on the agenda from the minority caucus, copying myself, the chair, and Dr. Willett. So I didn't respond, because to me, that would be an illegal meeting, and should be discussed publicly here with what we want to add to the agenda. That was my assumption.
Yeah. So on the agenda, so let's just talk a little bit about an agenda. So your board bylaws, you talk about the chairperson being the one who can set the agenda. We do need to be mindful, though, that doesn't mean that we should shut out a minority caucus if there is an agenda item that at least three board members feel very strongly about having on there, right? So there is a state statute that speaks to that. So I think we have to be balanced in how we set the agenda. But with respect to your question about whether that's an illegal meeting, we do need to be very mindful about emails, and I do also have that in this presentation, but like I said, we'll just, as it organically emerges, we'll talk about it. We have to be very careful with our email communication. So first of all, any email that Ashley sends to Christina is going to be subject to FOIA, subject to public disclosure. So that doesn't mean that because Ashley and Christina have an email exchange, that that's an illegal meeting, but it certainly means that it is most likely subject to public consumption. So we'd want to be very mindful about what we're actually writing to each other, because you are two board members. You also can have unilateral communication, or communication where you're not actually exchanging a viewpoint or discussing views or ideas. So for instance, if Dr. Willett sends the board packet to the full board, and Ashley or Christina respond to say, thank you, I've received the packet, that's not going to be a meeting, because that's not a discussion, even though you have more than a quorum on the email. And let's say a quorum responds to Dr. Willett's board packet saying, I've received it, thank you. That's not going to be construed as an illegal meeting, because there has not been a discussion of viewpoints. If Christina, what you're referring to, and I don't have all of it in front of me, but just based on what you've said, if it sounds like you have a quorum, and there is a discussion on viewpoint about what should be on agenda or what should not be on agenda, if it's a quorum of the board, that could be construed as an illegal meeting, but again, it would be a case-by-case analysis. So the better thing to do probably in that situation would be to have, you know, one of the minority caucus members call Ashley, as opposed to having back and forth about a viewpoint on whether something should be on the agenda or not. Because I think that that's a borderline, could be construed as an illegal meeting.
So Attorney, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
How does that work with social media? So if you have, say, a series of board members on social media, and there's a discussion of things, is there, you know, you're talking about email with respect to this, but just to circle it back to social media, if there are board members talking on social media, could that also be perilous if they're talking about setting, you know?
So if you look here, what exactly is a meeting? So Dr. Willett's right, if you look at how you're defining a meeting, any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum, and any communication by or to a quorum, in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the public agency has supervision. So if there were a quorum of you discussing whether or not to go hybrid, full in-person, full virtual through social media, that could also be construed as an illegal meeting if you've had an exchange of views. So we have to be very mindful that I'm not protected because I've used the mode of social media. It's the same thing if I did it through a text message. That would need to be a posted meeting. So we have to be, so Dr. Willett does raise a good point there, that that could also be construed as an illegal meeting.
We do have a couple other board members with their blue hand up, so I like to go through that one.
Sure.
Well, Kate?
Just interestingly, Rini pointed out that we didn't really need, I don't know, what did you call it, a civility, I don't remember, code of conduct. We don't need that, because there's no teeth. So I just want to point out that the civility code that was entered into the Board of Ed, I don't even know, policy, whatever, was, had no teeth in it. It had no, you know, we kept talking about it, the Republican supermajority did not want to add any teeth to it. So like, sure, the code of conduct doesn't have any teeth, but the civility code doesn't either, and that's why I didn't vote for it, even though I was on the policy committee to help write it. So I just wanted to clarify that, I think that's important for everybody to know. The other thing that I think is important for everybody to know, especially in concern to like, you know, how are we acting? Are we acting as individual people? Are we acting in our caucus? Are we acting as board members? All three letters that Christina Plord wrote to the various and sundry people identified her, she identified herself as the vice chair of the Tallinn Board of Education. I think that folks need to know that. And, you know, illegal caucus or not, you know, there's the question of propriety, and the question of whether or not we're undermining our superintendent, our sole employee. So that is just, those are just some things that are hurting my heart a little bit, and I just want to get out there in the ether. So, thank you.
Let's go to Karen.
I was just going to add, like, you know, I understand the, you know, not creating a meeting kind of thing, you know, that's understandable and a common thing to understand. I think with the letters, what people were concerned about, and this is what we heard from the public, is that these were done without discussion of the board as a whole. It was not done in a way that unified us. It was not done in a way that even informed the minority members of the board that this was happening. Yet, the tone of the letters was that they were speaking as board members. It just, it felt, it felt inappropriate. So I'm just going to-
Can I, I apologize, just to interject for a moment, Attorney Ritter, could you check the waiting room? I think there's some people potentially-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay, it's not nuts.
Yep.
The perils of being the host.
Yes, I did let them in.
I'm sorry to-
Sorry, Jessica, you have to do-
No, that's what I have to do right now.
Sorry about that, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to-
That's okay, that's okay. And then the only other thing about social media I was going to say is, a very easy social media policy is just don't do it. Don't talk about board business outside of our meetings. You know, there were times before social media was a thing, that that was what municipal boards kind of were held to. But I think that, too, is common sense. I mean, you're going to run into, as board members, you want to express your opinion, but when it runs into kind of undermining the work of the board as a whole, or their superintendent, who's trying to run daily operations of the district, you know, we need to be cognizant of that. So that's just my few comments there.
And there's just one more hand again, Plord.
I was just going to say, thank you, Jessica, for this, and, you know, sometimes I do feel like I'm reprimanded at the table, so I look forward to the rest of the presentation so we can save me from the error of my ways.
Yeah, well, Christina, I would say, though, I understand it does sound like there is some hurt feelings, for lack of a better term. And I do think, I guess the way that I would look at it is, I don't think, Christina, there's a complete error in the ways. I think you absolutely have the right to caucus with the other Republican members, just that, just like the minority caucus would have the right to caucus, and that's not an illegal meeting. I think you were right, Christina, to say that we have to be careful about our email communications. I guess what it sounds like is maybe that if there had been, if the full board had been informed that the caucus was sending this letter, it just sounds like that's what the minority caucus is asking for. And then, you know, that's probably something that, you know, I don't know whether you as a board could kind of talk through, and whether going forward, those types of communications, because I don't know who has the majority on this board, I'm assuming that it's Republicans. Again, if you had the majority on the board, you'd still have the ability to send that letter, but I guess it just sounds like the minority caucus just wanted, you know, I guess the heads up that the letter was being sent. And so I guess that's something that you as a board need to decide going forward. That's not a violation of any policy, though, per se, but it's just a matter of going forward how the board wants to handle those types of things.
Thank you.
And we have one more, Dana.
Sure, of course.
We have to step away for one quick second, and so, go ahead, Dana.
All right, thank you, Ashley, thank you, Jessica. I just have a couple of questions, things I'd like to clarify, if you could help kind of outline it. I don't know, obviously, the dynamics of every board are very different, and it's ever-changing and ever-evolving. And as you can probably gather, that there is an opportunity for civility and cohesive teamwork that we're trying to work towards. But I definitely think civility and social media are two separate things, and we have an opportunity to have those policies put in place, and have our leadership guide those policies. Because I think with any policy you have, it could be very finite with the, you know, it could be very black and white, and a lot of it can be very gray. In the HR world, everything is very gray. So in the social media world, everything is very gray. So even in human resources, there's still policies and procedures. I don't necessarily want to use the word reprimanding, but I think there needs to be some accountability and structure around it. And that's really all I have to say about the social media and civility. I don't think that we shouldn't create a policy, because we don't know how we would act upon the structure or the tangibility of it and the accountability of it. That's why we have leaders put in place and nominated in place to do that. On another note, with the dynamics of this board, the minority caucus, the minority does not have representation in the leadership. So the chair and the vice chair are both of the Republican Party. So as a minority, and as a minority caucus, what would be your recommendation? Because there are some things that we would like from our caucus brought to leadership and put on the agenda for a topic for a robust board discussion. So- So we can send an email, we can call, we can send an email. I always like sending an email because then it's, there's documentation and we have record of the, record of the communication. Do we have one member of the caucus send the email for, for the entire caucus and say this is from our caucus, and it's really only from one person, sending it to board leadership, and putting the minority caucus on the bottom as the signature? Do I just say this is from Dana Philbin, representing the minority caucus? This is, these are topic A, B, C, and D that we'd like to see in some future agendas? I mean, obviously, we want to be a part of the forward progression of the Town Board of Education, and we want to make sure that there are some topics put on the agenda to be discussed. I don't want my emails or anybody else from my caucus, or anybody else on the Board of Ed's emails to be shut down and not responded to, simply because of a concern with responding and having an illegal meeting. At that point-
Yeah.
The person who is, the person who is concerned about that can email me direct to send the email on a separate email and say, hey, I can't respond to the other email because of this, this, and this. However, we can discuss this, this, and this. So I guess what I'm asking is for legal guidance on what proper procedure to do, so that we can bring our ideas and thoughts to our board leadership to have that as a tangible discussion on an agenda.
Yeah, so you can make the request. So I think in Christina's example, it did sound like there was a back and forth on an exchange of views as to why there was merit for an agenda position. If it's merely a communication of, we would like to see this on the agenda, and there is not back and forth-
There was an email, there was an email from the minority caucus, one member, stating that it was from the three members of the caucus requesting those things. The other two of us were not CC'd on the email. It was the two board of leadership, Dr. Willet, and the person sending the email.
Yeah, so Dana, what, what I'm saying is, the appropriate way to handle this, and so if I'm, if I'm FOIA, it's always going to be a case-by-case analysis. I can't give you a bright-line rule. They're always going to look at the facts to make a determination as to whether there's an illegal meeting. I would say the more cautious approach, if you need that, if, if you want to reach out to the chair and the vice chair to say, these are agenda items that we would like to see, you can certainly do that. Now be mindful, it's all going to be subject to FOIA, but it will not be construed as an illegal meeting if you're not actually exchanging viewpoints. So if it's a mere matter of, this is what we would like on the agenda, that is not the same thing of, this needs to be the, on the agenda because of X, Y, and Z. So I think if you keep it short and say, these are the agenda items we'd like to see, that would be an appropriate way of communicating that. If there starts to be back and forth on an exchange of views as to why that's not an appropriate agenda item or why it is, that's where we're going to have a problem.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I didn't know I was still not on mute when I was saying, okay, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're obviously not putting anybody into a precarious situation, and in order to make sure that all voices, all nine of our voices are heard, I just want to make sure that we're dotting our Is and crossing our Ts, and we're ensuring that I'm, that we're not putting anybody in, in an inappropriate. So, again, and, and again, my question would be, so let's pretend that I'll be the spokesperson for the minority caucus for this example. If the minority caucus and I got together and said, we want A, B, C, and D, I would send an email to board leadership, Dr. Willet, and just myself, and have A, B, C, and D, and say, can we please see these on, on an agenda?
I would probably send it to the chair and to Dr. Willet.
Chair and Dr. Willet only.
Because then you don't have a quorum.
Okay.
But then I would, I would resist on all sides, any desire to exchange a viewpoint on the agenda item in writing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, I appreciate your clarification.
Yeah, doesn't mean that Ashley can't call you and say, hey, Dana, let's have a conversation about this. That's perfectly appropriate.
Awesome. Thank you, Jessica, I appreciate your clarification.
No, absolutely. Okay, Christina?
I just took my hand down, I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay. So I know we jumped around a lot, Ashley, so we've covered, covered a lot of things. What I can do is, I can sort of just, I, I jumped over some scenarios, but I think a lot of the scenarios we covered with respect to making sure that we don't abuse our privileges as a Board of Education member, so I can start going into more of the FOIA stuff, Ashley, if that works.
That works, whatever, like I said, you have the presentation here, so you know what you have.
And just, just for the board, the presentation is posted to the dashboard if you wanted to look at it afterwards, too.
Oh, perfect, that, that would be fantastic.
So I think it's a good segue, because you guys had some questions about, you know, what would be construed as an illegal meeting. And so I just want to be clear, there are some examples as to when we don't have to worry about it being construed as an illegal meeting. So one would be a personnel search committee. So let's say if, if you were looking for an assistant superintendent of schools, and you named the entire Board of Education as part of the Personnel Search Committee at a properly posted meeting, you then, as the Board of Education, could meet without posting to interview candidates related to the Assistant Superintendent and to make all decisions with respect to that, before, you know, acting at a, at a meeting on, you know, making your decision with respect to hiring. So the whole process leading up to the final vote, you can do without posting those meetings. The other thing, too, if, if you guys find yourself, you know, at a restaurant, and you all happen to be there, but it wasn't planned, it's just a, by happenstance that you're all there, that's perfectly fine, but if you take advantage of being at a restaurant and talking about board business and there's a quorum, that's going to be problematic. Any collective bargaining that you do is by definition called a non-meeting, so every time that we meet to negotiate with your teachers or your paras, none of that has to be posted, that's all considered a non-meeting under FOIA. Then we talked about the caucus and the member of a single political party, but remember, if you bring myself in there, even if you brought the town Republican counterpart into that, that will waive that caucus. So it is the Republican caucus or the Democratic caucus of the Board of Education. We obviously know our types of meetings, we have our regular, our special, our emergency. I'll just say this, the only time that an emergency meeting has ever been viewed by FOIA to be an appropriate emergency meeting is one in the aftermath of Newtown, and then also when COVID-19 hit. So very rarely is it appropriate to have an emergency meeting, which means we don't have to post, but within 72 hours of having that meeting, we have to relay to the town why we had that meeting and the, the legitimate justification for it. So I would always say, if you think that it's an emergency, it's probably not, and I would go and defer to having a special meeting, which obviously you can post within 24 hours. You know, a lot of this is going to be review for you, but as we know, with our, our regular meetings, agendas have to be posted at least 24 hours in advance. And the one thing that we can do in a regular meeting, that we cannot do in a special meeting, is if we say, oh, we were going to vote on this grant, we forgot to do so, or we forgot to put it on the agenda. And so if I get a two-thirds of those who are present and voting, I can add a new agenda item at a regular meeting. I cannot do that at a special meeting. I can only conduct the business that has been set forth on the agenda for a special meeting. Okay, so now I have a scenario. So this is actually, you know, let me skip over that, because we just did a social media one. Let's do this one. So this is related to, to meeting minutes. So I have a board member named Mal Content, who's been causing issues for the Nutmeg Board. During meetings, he would often verbally attack the motives of other members and staff, and it was suspected that he leaked information from an executive session. He would visit school buildings unannounced, demanding to be able to visit classrooms to check on underperforming teachers. But the last straw for the board was when he voted to approve the new teacher's contract, even though his wife was a teacher in the district. In a special meeting where Mal was not in attendance, they voted 8-0 to oust him from the board. So is this valid? So which statement is correct? One, a board member never can vote on his or her spouse's contract. B, the board member should not be serving on the board because his spouse is a district employee. C, the board's vote to remove the member from the board was invalid since the member was not in attendance, or D, none of the above. Any takers?
I'd go with A. I feel like A.
Okay, so let's break this down. So if you have, you're absolutely right. If you have a spouse, let's say who's a teacher in the district, you should not be part of teacher negotiations, you should not vote on the teacher's contract. The theory being that you are directly benefiting financially from that contract, right? So that's, that's a huge issue. If you do have an ethics commission, which Ashley, I believe you said that you did, that could lead to an ethics complaint. There's also state statutes that would, I think, also support that you'd be found to have engaged in a conflict of interest. The board member can certainly serve, even if you have a spouse who is an employee, you just want to make sure that you're never directly evaluating that person. So for instance, we wouldn't want a board member to be married to the superintendent of schools, because that could be problematic, both financially and from a, a conflict of interest standpoint.
So I'm off the market, kind of.
You're off the market wall. Exactly. But we also would want, so just, like I said, you'd have to recuse yourself, so let's say if your spouse was a paraprofessional, you'd want to recuse yourself from the paraprofessional contract. The board's vote to remove the member, you know, as we talked about, you don't have the ability to do that anyway. The things that you can do with a, you know, a, a board member who is acting up would be to strip them of committee responsibilities or any other type of responsibilities that have been delegated by the leadership, and to potentially, you know, go through a centering process under Robert's rules. So, we've talked about that. We've talked about the conflicts of interest. So let's go to our next scenario related to executive session. So the Nutmeg Board is in a special budget meeting when it learns of dire economic news that meant significant staffing cuts were necessary. Knowing that the board would need to discuss and decide the elimination of specific positions, and not wishing to needlessly distress or excite its employees, the chair added an executive session item to the agenda to discuss, quote, personnel matters. With a five-to-three vote, the board entered executive session. After an hour of discussion, the board members agreed without a vote to direct the superintendent to cut 10 staff positions. So which statement is incorrect? One, the board's agenda must state that the board will go into executive session. B, a vote to go into executive session must be by two-thirds. C, stating that the reasons for executive session was for personnel reasons insufficient. And D, the board cannot add an item to the agenda during a special meeting of the board. So which statement do you believe is incorrect there?
I, I don't think you can add an agenda item to the special meeting of the board when it's-
Right, but which is incorrect?
Those are just trash.
Right.
I was moving my screen around, because I had-
I would say C, because I don't think you need, do you need to always note why you're going into executive session? You need to have it noted, the topic? I see Ashley going like this.
So, yeah, so let me break this down for you. So the board's agenda must state that the board will go into executive session. That's actually not true, because executive session is the status of a meeting. You have to have two-thirds vote to legally go into executive session. So if you're to put on your agenda executive session to discuss the superintendent's contract, it's as if you're saying, I already know I have the two-thirds vote. So the appropriate way of doing that would be discussion concerning the superintendent's contract proposed for executive session. So you're putting the public on notice that you're likely going to convene into executive session, which means you'll be excusing them from the public portion of the meeting, so that you can have executive session. But there's nothing saying that the, the agenda actually has to say executive session, because by two-thirds vote, if it's an appropriate executive session, you can always go into the executive session, provided that it's on the agenda, or if it's a regular meeting, that you add, add the appropriate agenda item. Now, if it is to discuss the superintendent's contract, what do I have to do before I can legally discuss Dr. Willet's contract in executive session? What's a legal obligation that I have before I can legally do that? I have to give Dr. Willet notice. So if I'm going to discuss the employment contract or any kind of personnel matter, I have to give that person notice before I do that, because Dr. Willet has the right to say to me, you have to hold any discussion related to my employment in open session. Now, if he says that, you don't have the right to go into executive session to discuss his employment contract. If, however, he declines the open session, can he require that he be at the executive session?
By invitation.
Right, only by invitation. So he can't say to you, no, you can do executive session, but I'm going to mandate that I'm in there. You can say to him, you can be here for part of it, but there's parts of it that we prefer that you not be here, and you can exclude him from that. So only when you believe that his testimony or opinion is relevant, do you have to call him into that, provided that you've given him the option of having it held in open session. The other thing, too, so yes, B, it is correct that you need two-thirds vote to go into executive session, which is why, that's not the right answer. The right answer is A, because your agenda does not have to state executive session. With C, it is not never, ever sufficient to go into executive session for personnel matters. So FOIA has ample, well-established case law to say. The problem with just saying personnel reasons is you're not fairly apprising the public of what you're actually discussing, because the personnel reason is very broad. It's the same thing if you wanted to discuss an attorney-client communication. It's not enough to just tell the public, we're discussing an attorney-client communication, so we have the right to go into executive session. Ample case law, both on the attorney-client privilege and the personnel reasons, to say, you have to be more specific. So with respect to the personnel reasons, the personnel exception under the law is very clear that it's the discussion concerning the performance, the employment, the dismissal of ex-employee. And so it would always have to be that I'm discussing the employment, or I'm discussing the contract. It can't just be I'm discussing a personnel matter. In the example that I gave you in the scenario, that's not an appropriate executive session at all, because you're going in executive session to discuss the elimination of positions, but not the elimination of a specific individual. So that conversation, when you're talking about having to engage in a reduction in force, will have to be done in open session, because it's not about a specific person. The only way around that would be if you ask for a legal opinion as to how you legally can engage in a reduction in force with respect to, let's say, a certain category of employees. So that would be the only appropriate way to discuss that in executive session.
Attorney Ritter, can you comment on that with respect to student discipline? If they have to go into executive session on something that has to do with, like, an expulsion?
Sure. So the agenda item has to be very specific there, too. And so really, the exemption under FOIA is to discuss confidential student records in accordance with 10-233D. And so that, that again, we would have to properly notice the expulsion hearing, and the agenda item would have to be very clear that you're going into executive session to discuss confidential student records in accordance with the expulsion statute.
We never mention it, we never mention a name, right?
You never mention the name, and then you do have to vote to expel, expel in open session, but even then, you're never going to mention the name.
Right, I just want to make sure.
Karen has her hand up.
Sure.
Jessica, just, just quickly, when you say for executive session and using personnel matter, are there times when you can say that? Or are you just saying this for this particular example?
It's never going to be viewed as sufficient, Karen. So if you just say, executive session for a personnel matter, never going to be deemed sufficient. Same thing with executive session for an attorney-client communication, because you're not giving me more information. And the personnel matter is very limited to the actual discussion of the employment, dismissal, av-. to the actual discussion of the employment dismissal, evaluation, or contract of a specific employee. And since you, the Board of Ed, really, you're just talking about the superintendent of schools because it wouldn't be appropriate for you to evaluate an administrator. Now, one other example that might be before you is, let's say if you had an administrator who, under their contract, if they wanted to take a year of child-rearing leave and the contract says, I have to go to the board for that. You could do that to say, discussion concerning employees' requests to take leave.
Leave, okay.
Proposed for executive session, but do you see how that's much more specific?
Right.
Than just a personnel matter.
Personnel matter is just too broad for the public.
It's just, it, one, it's, it's not appropriate because, like in my example, it's not appropriate to go into executive session to discuss a budgetary issue, even though it's a personnel matter, because it's not specific to an individual.
Got it.
Now, doesn't mean, and so, you know, for instance, I had uh um in a school district where an employee was arrested. Um, it generated a lot of press and publicity. Um, the Board of Education wanted at least some initial information, certainly not more than we could give them, given that if a termination hearing proceeds, you have to sit as impartial judge and jury. But it was okay for us, for me, to draft an attorney-client communication related to steps for addressing a legal or personnel matter. Because then at least I gave a description as to what's in that attorney-client communication opinion. If I just say attorney-client communication, um, you know, you can be uh certainly, a complaint could be filed and they certainly would uh find against you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So you can see here, here are the reasons for executive session. Um, very few reasons actually that you actually can go. So the personnel matters, like we talked about, pending claims and litigation, but you actually have to be filed uh with the claim. Uh, it's not enough to say, you know, this parent threatened to sue. That would not constitute um an ability to go into executive session. Security devices and real estate. Um, so obviously, if you wanted to talk about where you're putting security cameras, that's something you could do in executive session. The confidential documents, so whether that be student records or an attorney-client communication. And then the collective bargaining strategy documents before you proceed to ratification on negotiations. All right, so here's another scenario on electronic communications. So it's time for the Nutmeg Board to elect officers. In the week leading up to the annual meeting, the internet is full of emails among board members soliciting support from other members. In addition, board members had caucus with their respective party chairs to decide on who would be the next chair. At the meeting, Mal content nominates Penny Pincher as the next chair. Infuriated, Bob Bombas sent an angry text message to Mal saying, what gives? I thought we had a deal. Mal responds, sorry Penny is supporting me for vice chair, you snooze, you lose. So the question is, which statement is correct? It is illegal for board members to commit support on an issue before the actual meeting. A majority of board members cannot discuss board business via email. Electronic communication between board members is okay as long it is one-on-one, or board members cannot caucus to discuss board issues. So which statement is correct?
I feel like B and C are both correct. Only one can be correct.
So. C, I would go with C here, but Christina, you raise a good point and that's why we draft this to be um overly vague, right? So, a majority of board members cannot discuss board business via email. Remember, we talked about the difference, and I guess you're right, the word discuss is probably, we talked about an exchange of viewpoints, right? Versus, I'm just having very superficial conversation about, am I available on this date? Or did I receive the board packet? So you're right that it probably could be written a little bit better, but I think that the answer here is really electronic communication between board members is okay, one-on-one, though with a caveat, that it's gonna be subject to public disclosure. So if, if, if Karen sends something to Kate, that's fine. But Karen wants to be mindful of, I don't want to put anything in there that the Hartford Current would glom onto.
I see Karen has her hand up.
Yep.
Um, I was just wondering, um, when they have this meeting though, like we typically elect our officers at our first board meeting. So we're not really officially board members yet. I guess, I guess I'm wondering what the situation was. Because you're saying.
Well, it was electing officers, but so, well, it depends because you have staggered terms, right? So some of you are. So I'm not sure I understand the question.
I guess I was just thinking this. You all, you have to get sworn in again when you're elected.
Yeah, but I think you'd still know um that you.
Now with staggered terms, but before we did not, so.
Yeah, but now you have staggered terms. And most bylaws say that you would pick your chairs within a month of being sworn in. And so normally you would be sworn in, but maybe your bylaws read differently.
Sometimes it doesn't necessarily happen at the first meeting, okay? I just thought.
Yeah, right, so I think that's important, but yeah.
That's just what we've, that's been our protocol, I guess, in Tallinn.
Okay. So, um, you know, we talked a lot about the FOIA and the electronic messages. I mean, unless you want to talk about that more, I think that we, we certainly exhausted that topic. Um, I think the important thing is just to be mindful that a quorum of board members engaged in a discussion or an exchange of viewpoints will be construed as an illegal meeting, so we just need to be mindful of that. And so certainly you'll have this presentation available to you and there's many slides that kind of outline some of the, the things to consider when engaging electronic communications. Remember, it's not just email. So sometimes I get the question of, well, if it's my personal phone or if it's on my Gmail or my Hotmail account, you're not gonna be able to hide behind that. So, one thing I guess I would ask is, do you all use Tallinn email or do you use personal accounts? And do you have access to a Tallinn email account?
Everyone has.
Okay, and are we diligent about only using the Tallinn email account?
I am.
So I would say we want to be very careful that we do that. And I say that because if you're ever subjected to an FOI request and some of them ask for records dating back ten years or ask for every correspondence under the sun in the last two years, you potentially could be subpoenaed to the FOIA Commission and they're going to ask you to do your due diligence through your Hotmail. They could potentially subpoena your phone, subpoena your Hotmail. And so we always want to be in a position that if I need to look for responsive documents, I can just very easily have IT pull up those responsive documents on my Tallinn email or I can very easily find them and track them. If you have them in your Hotmail or your Gmail, it's, it's, it can be very messy. Um, and so my advice would always be that if you're engaging in board business, do that on the Tallinn email and have anything outside of your board business be on your personal email. So, um, maybe we can do another scenario. Um, and then Ashley, tell me what you have for time, because I'm happy to answer if there's any other burning questions. Um, some of the other scenarios I think will um elicit some good conversation, but I want to be mindful of time too, knowing that it's nine thirty.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only thing that we really do have tonight, um, the capital budget request is that needs to get to the town council. Um, and that was kind of a really, a quick uh turnaround time. So I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions in terms of that. So, um, you know, if we could kind of, like you said, do the scenario, have some other uh quick conversation, then we can move on to the capital budget request, because I'm sure that people are gonna have questions. But like I said, that they need to get to the um, the town council because they gave Dr. Willet a little extension, because he really initially had. It was pretty, were real quick turnaround time even before last meeting, so.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. And you know, the, the conversations and the questions were, were so good that we got through a, a, a fair majority of the presentation anyway, just a little out of order, which I appreciate. Um, but so we can do this last, um, why don't we do this last scenario? And then if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them and then I'll let you guys get back to your agenda.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have the Nutmeg Board is considering the approval of a biology textbook made controversial by its numerous references to evolution. When it was time to vote, six of the members abstained from voting. With only Bob, Bob, Bob in opposition, the vote was two to one to approve the textbook. But Bob wasn't done, pointing out that the chairperson was one of the two votes in favor of the textbook. And since under Robert's rules, the chairperson can't vote, the textbook had not been approved. Penny Pincher added, besides, you need at least five votes to approve, or at least a majority of board members present. So which statement is correct on the following slide? Abstentions count as no votes? The chairperson can only vote in the event of a tie? The motion was properly approved by a majority of members present and voting? And motions must be approved by a majority of the members in attendance? So which statement is correct there? All right, well, let's break it down. Is an abstention a no vote? Or is an abstention, is there a distinction?
Just.
So if I abstain, it's not a no vote. Is it true that a chairperson can only vote in the event of a tie?
I vote.
Right, as you should vote. You absolutely should vote. And Christina, you're absolutely right. The answer is C. Um, because it's not that motions have to be approved by a majority in attendance. Because if you have four people abstaining, then it's gonna come down to the majority of those who are present and actually voting. And so that's why C is the appropriate answer.
Just a point of order. Um, I hope everyone appreciates how hard the SATs must be, given the four options we have for most of these. And how much trouble we're having with that. So it just, just gives you respect for the students. I'm sorry, I just wanted to throw it in there.
No, well, and I know you're all very smart and sophisticated, so we have to make them uh, you know.
Tricky.
Pretty tricky, we have to, right? Can't make it too easy for you guys.
It's just, you know, props to all the students here who are taking SATs. We, we are feeling your pain, so. Good stuff though, good stuff.
And I'll, we're gonna have to hand up as well.
Sure, absolutely.
This just made me think of a question, the scenario itself, approving a textbook. Is this something that, you know, curriculum change that we would review in a curriculum committee and then be brought to the board for approval, for board action? Or is this, because I feel like I've never voted on a textbook, so I'm just curious. Is this something we should be voting on?
Yeah, um, you know, I think under the curriculum statute, you can certainly delegate that to your superintendent of schools, but there are some boards of education who choose not to delegate some of those decisions. And so really, it, it sounds like Christina, your practice has been to delegate a lot of that to the administration.
Okay.
Which you have the ability to do.
Yep.
Great, so I'm, if there's no other questions, I, I definitely appreciate um everyone's time this evening. I know that these are, can be challenging issues. But if any other questions emerge, um, I'm happy to address them. And if there's any questions, Ashley, that emerge from the presentation or any follow-up, I'm happy to address them.
Oh, perfect, I think you did a great job. Like Dr. Willis said, just going through the answers, it's like you look at stuff and then you're just like, well, which one is really? Just that one word, I could switch it, so.
Well, if we were in person, I'd have the clickers, you could actually vote and we could see, you know, who came up with the right answer, so, but we don't have that anymore.
Thank you, thank you for everything. I think it's very, very informative, it was very informative.
My pleasure, Walt, um, how do I switch it back to you?
Okay, so you, if you click on me, I actually, I can probably, I'll reclaim host.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep, and I'm gonna stop the share.
Yeah, no problem reclaiming that quick.
All right, well, thank you guys very much for your time this evening. Take care.
Thank you, Jessica.
Really appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, so uh, everything just moved around a bit, so I'm just getting everything back in order. All right, I'm going to share the, the screen of the agenda and then we can move forward, um, if you'd like.
Well, um, we have H two, the monthly financial report, so if you want to just go ahead and put that.
Yep, yep. Okay, so. Moving to the monthly financial report, um, as you know, every month we do uh, you know, do the update for the financial report. It does lag a month behind, so for instance, this is the monthly financial report. The date on it is October, but it is referencing the September close. Um, as we get to the end of the month in September, the balance is three point two million, so that's three million, two hundred and thirty thousand um, three fifty-two, which is eight point zero seven percent of the budget. Um, it's not an entirely uncommon situation. And so, uh, you know, for the budget of forty oh one seven two ninety, um, we're going to be throughout the remainder of this year, spending it down as you would expect. There's nothing terribly unusual about where we are right now, other than COVID, if you consider that, you know, unusual. Um, that is something that is gonna impact us this year and kind of already has in a number of different ways. So, you know, as we move forward, we're gonna see certain things be a little bit different than they normally would be. So for instance, and let me move over to the actual um, printout of the lines here. So, you can get this online. Um, the agenda is posted online and you'll be able to blow it up a little bit better than I can blow it up here for the, for the Zoom meeting. But um, to go over some of the highlights, salaries are currently, for instance, under budget. Um, COVID has affected certain things with that and we have additional hiring to do. So, um, you know, we're looking to hire um, you know, teachers and paras, um, in particular paras, as uh, the paras, you know, situation evolves. Um, so we're, we're in that process and that does affect salaries. In addition, you know, I'll recall that our athletic director is acting as our assistant principal this year, which also affects that line. So our salaries are currently under budget. Um, that's where we are right now, but as we go through this year with COVID, that, that may fluctuate a bit because of other actions that we may have to take. Uh, substitute available balance also is three fifty-six, is under budget. Again, this is the beginning of the year. Um, we are going to be seeing an uptick in substitutes. Um, and that has to do, obviously, with COVID, as we're, we are processing um, the appropriate actions that the Highland Health District, Eastern, Eastern Highland Health District and others are recommending. And so we will be utilizing subs more and more as the year goes on, obviously, given, um, you know, if, if we are impacted by uh COVID a certain way. Overtime expenses are currently under budget, but I don't expect uh that to stay that way either. Stipends are a bit over. Um, similar to prior years, all budgeted stipends have been encumbered for. Um, pay-to-play funds have not been fully collected for obvious reasons, so pay-to-play fun, funds tend to affect the bottom line in this area. We rely on pay-to-play, pay-to-play funds. And um, this year, we're, we're not gonna be collecting as much. So the available balance is slowly gonna reduce throughout the year, but we're gonna, we may be a little bit over budget in that as we try to run sports and, and we're not collecting the same amount that we did otherwise. Health insurance severance and employee benefits are collectively uh a bit under budget right now. Again, you know, that's, we're just beginning of the year, really, we're not that far in, so that's um something we just have to watch newly employer, oh, sorry, newly hired employees um, and retired employees and social security newly hired employees and those that have retired since the beginning of the year um, can change the available balances, so the available balance is one thirty under and will remain under until the hiring process is finished, which I talked about a little bit above. Retirement course reimbursement and employee expenses are all collectively under budget um at the end of September, but there could be a surge in unemployment expenses, depending on the impact of the coronavirus. So that's something we have to watch carefully. Uh, benefits consultant and workers' comp are on target. Legal audit and tech service are all collectively under budget. Um, this district will be negotiating with paras this year and we have started that process. So the secretary of union negotiations will also start um within this, this span of time of this entire year. So the expenses on these lines will likely, you know, those will likely impact uh. the expenses on these lines will likely, you know, those will likely impact the lines noticeably. All repairs, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment, things like that, technical expense will continue to be impacted as the year progresses. And I do think we're gonna see an uptick in that, obviously, as we're putting more energy into cleaning and certain expenses. Many of the maintenance and cleaning expenses are typically cyclical, but we're gonna see, you know, it'll be a little bit more than what we would usually see. Transportation is under budget by 303. The majority of the savings come from some of the out-of-district student transportation and leap transportation taking over, so that's good news. We're accruing or saving some funds there, at least at this point in the year. Athletic transportation is under budget by 48,000 for understandable reasons. We're not transporting teams the way we were before, even though some of that is occurring. How special ed. Budget by 594,000 as we start the school year. That can change as the district continues to make sure that we're serving students appropriately. But right now, our programs are running quite efficiently and we're seeing initial benefits of that. We do have to keep an eye on that as the year goes on. And I wouldn't just assume that that will stay the same, because as we know, one particular placement can take 25% of that amount away, so we just have to keep an eye on that. Energy expenses were transferred to the town, as is the typical process, for the universal internal service fund. Textbooks have obviously not been fully expended at this point. Curriculum coordinators will continue to move that forward. We do have a few pilots underway right now, and we expect to wrap them up somewhere around the mid-year point, and then we'll see an incurred expense in this area. And instructional applies, equipment, miscellaneous, general supplies are collectively under budget at this point. But as you might imagine, you know, we are really, we're just in September in this particular printout, so we do expect that to change as we move along. So that's the quick overview, so to speak, and I'll just leave it there. I'll put a period on it. Right there.
Okay, let's go to the board members for questions. Kate's hand is up.
Thank you, Dr. Willis, as always, for your thorough report. Couple of questions. Paras situation, I'm generally concerned about paras. Are we understaffed right now? And if so, what's our plan to remediate that?
Well, we are actively addressing that situation. I would say that we do have staff challenges right now. I would say we're not alone. I think a lot of districts are going through that. And so, you know, we're in a situation where certainly people are looking at, you know, the entire context of COVID and they're making decisions about whether they want to continue, you know, in the role that they're in. That's true of us and true of other places. And so, you know, we do have people thinking, you know, if there was a time to transition, maybe this is the time in their life to do so. And, you know, understandably, they're doing that. But, you know, we are in the process of constantly, you know, opening it up and achieving and getting new people that are coming in, and so we've had hires up to even a day or two ago, even today. So we're in the process of taking care of any of the challenges that are arising from that. But, you know, yeah, people are making decisions about their life and ones we respect. And then, of course, we address it as that comes up. But we are able to, you know, we are going to be, we're not closing the schools, you know, we're able to staff things and keep the wheels turning. So, you know, it's impactful, but it's not going to cripple us, obviously, right now.
Thank you. I have three more questions. You said we rely on pay-to-play funds. Can you talk, like, what do you mean by that? I know what pay-to-play funds means, but you said we rely on it, so I'm just wondering what that means for budget implications.
All right, so Talon's pay-to-play funds are pretty, are higher than most in the area. Talon does typically utilize those increased pay-to-play funds, you know, to support that athletics program. So, you know, when we do not have them, that's a very large chunk of our budget that is not there. So, you know, if we're gonna be expending dollars in athletics, we are not taking in the same amount in pay-to-play to do that. And although we'll have some offsets, like we're not using as much transportation, we are gonna see, you know, things like in that line. That line will typically run in a kind of over-budget status until we collect pay-to-play funds. Because we're not gonna collect as much this year, we aren't certain as to where that will end. So, or how that will, how that will resolve at the end. So, that's kind of what I was saying when, you know, that particular stipend line, that's over budget and usually is over budget until we collect those funds. And because we're collecting less, we're just not certain where that will end.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the word rely. Because, anyway. So saving funds with transportation, good news. Like, you mentioned that it was partially due to leap. I'm guessing also due to students who chose to be remote. I know that that's the case of my district. What, like, what else is impacting that? And like, how much of a, like, how how regular do we think this is gonna be for the year?
For the tuitions?
No, no, transportation.
Oh.
Why, like, why are we saving money on transportation? That's my question.
Well, right now, it's because we are essentially not busing students to certain placements because of a number of issues that, you know, including COVID and that we are serving them within district and things like the TTA, the LEAP.
TTA is transition.
The Talon Transition Academy, you know, we're not needing.
That's for the 18 to 21-year-old students, yes?
Yeah, we're not using as much of those things. But essentially, you know, that does have to do also with basically overall out-of-district student transportation, just as a general, you know, statement. Because that's where we would be recovering most of those funds, is students that are not utilizing the out-of-district transportation. But again, a caveat on that is that this is very early in the year. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at that and say, we won't. It's just that right now, we haven't and, you know, and maybe we won't, but but I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it and think we have that in the bank, so to speak.
Right, no, I get that. And then the special ed budget, that is really awesome. I think that speaks to all of the planning that you and Patty have done throughout the years to keep our special ed students in district, and that's really, really great. So I just really want to comment on that. And again, I know it's month one, but, I mean, this is, this is part of a longer vision that I think sometimes goes under-celebrated, so I wanted to celebrate that publicly, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, we have, your school district is well-served by Patty Hess and Wendy Cody, who are, you know, really the special ed men, and they've done a magnificent job just in overall for the district for quite a while, so it's great.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you. Kate, let's go to Griffin.
Ashley, all right, thank you, Walt, and thank you also for going through it line by line. What the accountant in me loves to, loves to hear, so that was perfect, thank you. I just had a quick question. I know, I think, I can't remember now, I'm sorry if it was last FFC or one of the last meetings where we talked about, you had roughly about $104,000 of kind of COVID expenses for Plexiglas, cleaning supplies and all that. I know that that's all kind of built in here somewhere. Is that number kind of holding steady or has that increased?
Holding steady, but it is slightly increasing as we go along, so I think it's 107 right now, if I had to, if I had to guess, 107, 108. It all depends on what's incurred. We also may get, you know, we are applying and putting in for literally every dollar we can. So if we got some new thing opened up from the state and we could apply for it, it could impact that too, because we could regain some funds that then would, you know, backfill. But, but right now, you know, we were keeping track of that line. It would be probably in the 108, the last time I checked, somewhere in that zone.
Okay, great. That's not too bad, so hopefully it won't be too much more and hopefully we'll still have that option to pull it out of the emergency COVID fund when we get that kind of straightened out with the town, so. All right, that is actually all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, so I guess the key words here, Dr. Willis, are we're very early in the year, obviously, in our, in our budget. I'm just recalling back to when we discussed fiscal year '20's budget items and when we were talking about, you had a list, I don't have it in front of me, of things that would have to be put back into the budget this year. Or I think it might even be after this year. Programming and things like that. And I feel like that's an important conversation as we talk about, as we get through the year and talk about budget, that, you know, just because we're saving money right now doesn't mean these things have to get normalized again as we move forward.
Right, well, we are, we are, again, to just asterisk it and to highlight it, we are very early in the year here, so, you know, we September is never a great snapshot of how we are going to end. But having said that, I think you'll, you know, when we do get to the point, and we are getting there of having, for instance, the LA supervisor do a presentation, I think you'll, you'll get a sense of what the impacts are to where we, where we are budget-wise in areas like that. You know, we are at a point where we've already really spent that line, and it's September. So, yeah, it is gonna be impactful, as we talked about as we were going along, certainly. And, you know, and we'll, you know, we will watch that situation evolve as we make through the year and continue that conversation as we enter the next budget season here very shortly. So, you know, I think you'll hear from them that, you know, there are some things that we could really use, and you'll hear it from their mouth, I think, and that's probably one of the best ways it can happen.
Right, so like, things we're gonna need to react to.
Yeah.
And the budget will change. Sure. Okay, thank you.
At this time, we're keeping up on 10 o'clock. I just looked at the clock and we're like to entertain a motion to extend beyond 10.
Jacob, Mari, I move that we extend the board of ed meeting past 10:00 PM.
Okay, discussion. I don't believe anyone's gonna have a discussion, so we'll go to roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Plord?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I as well, all in favor, so we will go past 10 o'clock. Thank you. Plord, did you have your hand up for something else or?
It was to go past 10.
Oh, so I just happened to look at my clock and I'm like, let's get that in. Oh, Lisa, Lisa has her hand up. Lisa?
Quick question, who was the second?
It was a toss-up between Dana and Plord. They were both saying it, pretty much.
You're poison.
Okay, thank you.
And Griffin has her hand up.
I just, I happen to have it right in front of me. Karen, you were referring to kind of the stuff that we're gonna need to restore for the fiscal year '22. So it's about $147,000 worth of programs that we'll have to kind of bring back that we prepaid. So the good news is Dr. Willis did a great job kind of prepaying the stuff that were one-time, so I think we have a decent, you know, outlook on what we'll need to bring back and, you know, it should be, hopefully, we'll be in good shape.
I realize that, but I, my point was that there's a lot of uncertainty, so we need to rely on our administrators and superintendent to, you know, we'll see how that goes, I guess, throughout the year. We don't know what the repercussions are gonna be next year. It could be worse, so that's all. I'm just talking about uncertainty.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I misunderstood the question. I was not getting from it specifically that particular thing, but, you know, sorry if I misunderstood.
No, it's fine, it's fine. I was, I'm just, I was recalling back to what we talked about, but that, you know, when you're actually in the situation that we're in right now, there's a lot of uncertainty still, so I just want everybody to be cognizant of that.
Okay. I think at this time, I think the monthly financial report is all set. So let's go to the H3, which we had moved up from K3 of the 9130.
Okay, so, so we're going to now capital budget requests.
Um, no, we moved the K3 policy 9130.
Oh, you moved that up to, I got three and four, up to now H3 and four?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So let me jump to K3 here. This one's pretty straightforward, 9130. The specific aspect of 9130 that's on the docket for tonight is moving the time back from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. We're in the process of setting out the next year's meetings. We typically do do that around this time. The board votes on the upcoming year's meetings as we get to the close of this year. And so this would be the time, if you wanted, and this had been a conversation the board had taken up in the past, of moving board meetings back from 7:30 to 7. It needs a board revision to policy 9130, therefore it is offered to the Board of Education for discussion. And the proposed motion, should you decide to do that, would be motion to change the start time of the meetings from 7:30 to 7 and amend policy 9130 accordingly. The section of 9130 that would get amended would be would be two, oh, I'm sorry, would be three, meeting time and place. And all regular meetings shall begin at 7 or thereafter. So that would be the amendment we would make.
Okay. Time, we'll go through the blue hands, Jacob?
Clarification, so if we voted and we changed this to 7:00 PM, would that be effective immediately after it passes? Or is that for like the next calendar year?
That would be for the upcoming meetings. No, you can't, I think, change what you've already got out here. It would be for the new calendar meetings.
Okay.
Anyone else at this time have anything to add? Let's go to H4, the review for the green cleaning.
So, moving to H4. Right now, we, as you know, are in the throes of COVID. And I would like to make a recommendation. I did do some additional research on this. So what's in the board packet talks about a motion to suspend 1041 because there are some, obviously, things that we are allowed through the state to use. So, you know, 10231G Connecticut General Statutes talks about green cleaning. Letter of March 5th from the Commissioner, Josh Cabal, allowed districts and made it very clear to districts that we could use certain sanitizing products and that we, you know, had some flexibility there, and so that, I attached that memo to this as well. So it is part of the board agenda. But what I learned in the process of further researching this was that rather than suspend the policy, we can motion to amend it and just add these two potential lines to the policy 1041 itself. And that basically just updates the policy rather than suspending the policy. And it's probably better to update the policy rather than to suspend it entirely. So what is recommended now is a motion to amend 1041 and pursuant to subsection A2A, you know, you see in the yellow highlight here, this would be added to the, to the board policy. And then after item 5, adding the next line, guidance regarding green cleaning requirements comes from and references the letter that I attached here, as well as the website that it comes from. And then basically doing some basic updates of the particular Connecticut General Statutes that are referenced. So to see what those amendments would look like in action, they would fall right into our policy here, 1041, after section 5, and then after the Connecticut General Statutes reference. These would be the two places that this amendment to the policy, you know, would fall. Or these would be the two places that the amendment. Or these would be the two places that the amendments to the policy would fall. So rather than, um, suspending the entire policy, I would recommend, you know, amending it with, with these.
Um, does any board member have any questions in regards to the amendments that Dr. Willet is proposing on this? Uh, Plord?
Oh, I was just gonna ask Dr. Willet if you could, um, post what you updated here that I see on the screen on the Board of Ed dashboard, just so I can reread it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. I just lost the agenda.
Oh, I can give it, I can put it up for you.
Oh, here it is. It's blue, you know, come on. Okay, um, so at this point then, let's go to the committee and liaison reports, um, if we could get, I think Birch Grove had one, if I'm not mistaken, Dana? Right, okay, so that we could start there.
Okay, um, thank you, Ashley. So, um, first and foremost, we had the, sorry, I'm just reviewing my notes from the computer, it's easier. First and foremost, um, other than just waiting on the signature for the unsuitable soils, um, reimbursement, it had, we have been reimbursed 100% for the unsuitable soils. So that is fantastic news for the talent of talent. The other, what Katie has discussed, bringing back to our, one of our next agendas, is there was a handful of top of items that we kind of tabled to either, that we were gonna either add on or take away based on the budgetary constraints due to the unsuitable soil opportunity of having to pay for that. So at our, one of our next two meetings, we're gonna be discussing, um, some of those options and putting those back in when it comes to different moldings and textiles and aesthetics and such. So we're gonna be talking about that. We are ahead of schedule according to, um, our site super Eugene Carcia. We, the buildings are tight, um, enclosed, and tight means enclosed, and they're starting the moldings and the finit, like those fine-tuned touches. They have heat coming in, temporary heat, so that they can, um, start doing the inside work and, and on that. There is also the mock room, and I don't know if Dr. Willet can speak more about that, but they'll have the, the, the templated room that'll be fully, fully done. They've also invited, um, the, the committee members to come and do a site visit and a site walk. They're attempting to try to get, uh, a meeting, so we can actually have a meeting on the site during daylight hours, so it can be outside. And see the actual site. There are some committee members that cannot make it during the proposed time, so they have offered, one-on-one visits and to walk through, um, the site at Birch Grove. But all in all, um, we're progressing nicely. And we've had wonderful, uh, support, um, from our state and our state representatives. So, uh, some great news about the soil. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Willet, did you want to add anything in terms of the, um, the mock room that she was talking about?
They, they're just working hard to pull that together. I know that they have a team of teachers that, um, that they've been working with, and I know Tom Swanson, and then, uh, I've been working very, you know, hard to, to, um, make that really, uh, a very, you know, very, excellent example of what it will look like overall. So it's, it's coming and it's, uh, it's just great. They're working, they're, they're just coming up with a really, you know, great, um, great example of what things are gonna look like.
It's been a really, it's been a collab, sorry, I didn't mean to come back, but it's been a collaborative effort, um, from J C J, Damato, the entire team there, as well as the administrators and faculty and staff at, at Birch Grove. We're really cranking on all cylinders. So it's, it's, it's pretty awesome to, to read about and see and, and hear about the progress.
Oh, every time I pass by, sometimes I just kind of take a quick peek and I'm like, holy moly, it's like really coming together, so.
It's like, it's every time you pass by, it's something, it's something new and it looks like a, I mean, it's, I can't believe the progress. It's fantastic.
Oh, it's-
Try to, try to do a panoramic of that posted somewhere at some point.
I have faith that you could figure it out.
Oh, yeah. It'll be fun.
Might have a doodle call attached, but you'll figure it out.
Yep. That's right.
Let's go to, uh, Kate.
Yeah, I just wanted to do the curriculum committee, um, report. Um, we didn't have an official meeting because we didn't have enough folks coming. So there's no official meeting, but there is held over business, so I would like to request that you ask, Ashley, this is a request to you, that you ask, um, the ELA supervisor Barbara Daly Burns to attend our next meeting, um, just to give us a presentation. I believe that Dr. Willet has already kind of queued that up with her. Um, and the other piece that I would also respectfully request of the entire board with regard to committee, is that if we're not gonna be able to make it, just to, um, email the chair so that we can, you know, I, I put a lot of time into preparing curriculum stuff and, um, not being able to hold the meeting was a downer. Although I did enjoy the conversation with Christine and Dr. Willet.
Um, in terms of the ELLA, um, I do believe Dr. Willet had said the first meeting in November. Was that still the plan?
Sure, I mean, we can, yep.
That's fine. Either way, like she's just, we're just ready to ask, you know, kind of see her and get that moving.
Yeah, no, that was definitely something on there. And, um, in terms of the meeting, uh, can you, I think you still can hold a meeting if there's members that are still not present. They're, you know, I mean, that's up to you as a chair, but I think that you, you still can. But just throw that out there.
I don't know, like, you know, whatever. It, it didn't seem right to hold it without at least three people. So I don't, I don't know what the policy is. I just know what our former practice has been. So it is what it is.
Um, Jacob, you have your hand up.
Yeah, no, um, I had talked to, to you about this earlier and you wanted me to mention it during the meeting, so.
Oh, in the email, yeah.
A good time, but, um, I, I did express some interest in joining the negotiations committee. And I sent an email about that relevant information, so if that could be a future agenda item, um, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I sent that today, um, I saw that. Okay, um, perfect. Plord, you have, you have your hand up.
Oh, my question, I forgot to ask Jessica about the committee quorums, if you will. Uh, so maybe that since it's a question that we're bringing up here, we could just ask her as a follow-up.
Okay.
And policy did meet, and you, um, got those updates in the first reads you just did.
Okay, so there's nothing else then? Am I missing anything? I know Communications was canceled today because Tony was not able to come last minute. Karen, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Um, yeah, I'll just, um, I reached out to Tony. We're gonna, um, hopefully, uh, I'm not sure if he got back to me yet. I'll probably schedule a special meeting for Communications and we'll figure out a schedule with Dr. Willet, um, just because, the items are building up now, so I kind of would like to get it discussed, so we don't have a giant one next, next month, so.
Understandable.
So we'll, we'll try that. Um, and then just as far as members on committees, I would just say that, you know, if, you know, just as Kate was talking about curriculum, I know she has four board members on there, is that correct? Is it four on curriculum?
Yeah, Jacob, Plord, Griffin, and Kate.
Four, okay. So I think just from my own observation and, experience, especially for something like curriculum, where you're talking about programs and things like that, whether it's mastery learning, understanding by design, whatever it may be, if you're missing two members from your committee, it's not very productive if they're missing out on the information and discussion that you're having. So I guess, you know, I would also defer to, you know, the chair's, opinion, observation about what's gonna be productive and not productive if she's missing or if they're missing members. So, um, that's just a little observation on my part as far as having a productive committee.
Okay. Um, the other one, uh, Reenie, do you have anything for negotiations?
Um, I think Dr. Willet kind of references, we are, um, starting negotiations with the paras, and we've, set up some meetings to move forward with that. So we're on the path.
Okay. I think we have all of our committees now.
Ashley, I'm sorry, it's Dana. Um, we haven't had a town council liaison report in months. I don't know, we're, do we still not have that? Are we not doing that?
Uh, Karen, um, I know you and Tony were flipping, and I know everything got messed up with Tony, um, in Australia. He's really-
Yeah, and with, honestly, with COVID and all the meetings that everyone's trying to juggle and stuff, it's just kind of fell by the wayside and I can't always get there. Um, and quite honestly, their meetings have been really long too. So, you know, it's not been, other than, you know, the Mental Health and Substance Use Task Force, which Tammy came to our meeting to talk about. Um, when we get into budget season, then you might, you know, have some board issues, I guess, come up that you might wanna make sure you have a liaison at, but, um, I mean, I, I don't know about Tony and his work, you know, obligations, if he's been able to get there. Sometimes I can, sometimes I can't, so. Um, yeah, I don't know. We'll have to revisit it.
Yeah. Sure, when he's supposed to be scheduled back, because I think he was supposed to come back October, but I'm not sure if that's necessarily happening. So, um, you know, I think that's gonna be a tough call, because I know, like I said, he plans on coming and then last minute, it's like something comes up and, you know, he is on a completely different time zone, on a different day than us, and I know it's difficult.
If we get someone else to assist-
I was gonna say, why don't you just have, like, Jacob do that as, I know, as a responsibility?
I'm sure Jacob would probably-
Do, me, everybody's got, you know, kind of a lot on their plates and, you know, we, we can't even get to the committees we have right now, so.
Be happy to have a discussion about that, Ashley, um, if you want me to take that on, you know, with Tony.
Okay, yeah, no, um, Reenie has her hand up too?
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, we do get the minutes in our packets and stuff too, that I think board members can be reviewing as well, right? Just to take a little pressure off if here and there we can't have a liaison at a meeting.
I mean, that's a good point too. I mean, they are attached and we do, um, peruse them. I do.
Me too, Ashley. Sorry, not to jump in again, but, you know, you seem to have a, a good, you know, communication channel with, um, with Tammy. So I think if, if there's something on their agenda, they need, definitely need to have somebody there. I would think that she would let you know, but.
Yeah, and I could, I could always just reach out to her and just, uh, request that as well, um, just to make sure that we aren't missing anything and nothing gets kind of-
Yeah, I mean, especially over the summer, it was a lot of, you know, COVID stuff.
We were just trying to open up this-
Team management, you know, all of that, which we're all kind of engrossed in anyway, so.
No, I agree. I, I do think, um, you know, it's, it's been a particular tough year with extra meetings, especially with COVID and having everything. So I, I completely understand, but, you know, I will send both.
And this is, you know, this is why in the past, you know, past board, we did a rotational through the whole board, kind of taking turns going to council meetings because it kind of spread the responsibility out for everybody. And it wasn't such a bad thing that everybody, you know, had a chance to go to a council meeting and engage with them, so. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on. Um, let's get the chairperson's report, I talk enough. Um, let's go to the, uh, board action for the capital budget request, because I'm sure we will have, uh, lots of, uh, discussion on this.
Okay, so basically, uh, as you recall, we queued up the capital budget, um, in the last meeting. You know, the, uh, the deadline comes up pretty quick on that, so, now, I posted to the Board of Ed dashboard some information. And, uh, this board meeting, this is where you officially look at, um, the Board of Ed capital budget request. And so, um, in that vein, uh, the yellow highlighting are the capital budget requests through fiscal year 2026, which is five years, which is typically the process. The brown represents the town council allocation, and there was an allocation in the fiscal year 1718 of remaining funds that was applied to capital projects. And for reference, there's an agenda item in 5142019, capital improvement funds, just in case anybody wants to look that up. Um, the green represents the town's bonded project status. And the purple represents when opportunity arises. We're probably going to need a different name for that in the future because woe is, you know, probably not the best term when you're looking at fiscal numbers. But in any case, um, the purple is something that, uh, typically we aren't getting to within that five-year plan. It's just if, uh, something comes up, maybe a grant or some other opportunity, um, then it would, but otherwise it's, it's inappropriate, really. So, um, the projects that, uh, are being recommended by facilities, um, and this is collected across the district, that would be included in our capital budget request for, um, for the coming, you know, five-year period. And you'll see where it gets spread out a bit. The artillery lift, uh, we are not going into combat with any neighboring district, and artillery lift actually lifts you up, um, so you can reach high areas.
I had to Google that one.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, uh, it's not, we are not, uh, supporting the, you know, supporting any branch right now of the military at the expense of Talon. We are actually trying to save money. So to give you an example, these are the projects that were completed with the rented artillery lift. And our problem is that, um, we are unable to, uh, we would actually, in the long run, save money by having our own artillery lift rather than having to rely, say, on, um, the one available to town or to the one that, you know, we would end up having to, to rent to cover it. So these are all, uh, different things that, um, needed to happen with the artillery lift that had, we had our own, we would not have had to incur any other expense. So I, I asked to have those articulated, um, just to give you an example. So these are the, the projects, um, that, you know, that we could actually be saving money if we had it to ourself. So that's the reason why the artillery lift is on there, per se. Uh, radio setup, I won't, uh, I'll go and just kind of go over all of these, and then, um, if you have questions, then I can go and dive deeper into each of them. Um, but radio setup is just to help us, uh, maintain our radio systems, so TIS, front entry walk, nurse, nurse area redesign, just really briefly, if you've been in TIS and you've seen the nurse's office, you understand why there's a need for a redesign. You know, kids are coming in there with buckets and, uh, that's a small space. So I see Rainey's confusion. Every educator knows what I mean. The kids are coming in with buckets, you know, it's usually because they're using the buckets because they're not feeling well. I wouldn't want to necessarily be in the TIS nurse's office when that's happening. But they are in a place where, um, they could actually expand that, and that would be very helpful to the nurses. Basement custodial redo for the closet, that's been on the radar for a while, really needs to get done and will help, um, have a better, uh, better kind of place for supplies and, uh, for preparations. Grease trap, you have to, you have to do those, um, every couple of years, and if you don't, that's, that could cause more damage and problems. And again, these are very short highlights. Um, the information that we'll post on the webpage tomorrow has disaggregations of every one of these in more detail. And I can give you more detail, uh, if, you know, questions arise, so I'm just kind of overviewing. Audio auditorium stage and stage curtains at TMS, um, anyone who's been there, I used to be the principal there, um, very, very old and dusty and are starting to smell like mold, so it's a good idea to get those replaced. They've been around for a long, long time. We do have to replace caftails as, as time goes on, so this is a part of a cycle of just trying to make sure that we're able to do that. They, they start falling apart and, you know, getting rusty and that's not good. Um, paving of the bus lot needs to happen, track resurfacing needs to happen, and stage risers, they start falling apart and you don't want the kids on stage risers that are not going well, you know, not, not doing well. Uh, THS, the track and the special ed redesign, track is, you know, self-explained- Uh, THS, the track and the special ed um, redesign, track is, you know, self-explanatory, but we can go into detail more, and um, special ed redesign is um, trying to uh, take a look at the two uh, two, two areas or office spaces for special ed in the high school and um, connect them. Right now, uh, students who are there for certain meetings have to walk out into the hallway, and sometimes it exposes kids to being seen when they'd rather not be seen, so this would actually set up the office so that children could move between these two particular office rooms uh, for testing other things and meetings without necessarily having to constantly go out and be seen going, you know, from one of these offices to the other. So it's a way of trying to be sensitive, um, you know, and uh, proactive about uh, you know, people feeling a little uncomfortable and uh, increase some efficiency, so. So that's a general overview, and of course, we can go into greater detail. If you notice on our uh, capital webpage, we have the the different projects listed there as well, and so after tonight, depending on what the board decides to move forward here and endorse, um, we will post to the website a full disaggregation of every one of these projects, so you can see the actual, um, you know, the actual project plan, and um, you, you, if you're wondering what that looks like, if you do go to our website under capital projects, you, if you open any of them, you'll see what the, the plan looks like for each individual capital project that we've done. So kudos to, to our facilities director, Pete Staba, he's always great about putting um, those together and making sure that we have all the information we need. So, um, so that's about, you know, it as far as an overview is concerned. I did uh, put these materials up for people to see for this meeting, so you can see, you know, see it as we're talking about it. The fiscal year overall color-coded uh, chart is up, and the project sheets and descriptions are up. Um, like I said, they will officially go to the website tomorrow. So if you see that, you'll see what's being considered tonight, but they'll be officially transitioned to the, the historical page. Um, so at this point, let's see, I seem to have lost, uh, here we go. This is the color-coded uh, one that I referenced before, that gives you a kind of eyeball view of the five years overall, where all of these fall within that, and um, and using that color coding that I talked about before, to get a sense of what matches what. It's also on this in the Board of Ed packet. And this page will also be posted to the Board of Ed website, I'm sorry, to, yeah, to the Board of Ed website, um, as, as are the other years as a reference point uh, after this meeting. So that's roughly where we are, where these fall and what they are, um, I'll put the period there and wait for any questions.
Okay, perfect. So at this time, though, any board members have any questions, please raise your blue hand, um, you know, I have a couple, but I'll wait and see what questions people might have. Uh, Plor?
I was just curious about the artillery lift. Um, I wasn't sure if FFC, if there was some sort of uh, cost analysis of looking at the actual purchase versus renting and how long it would take to recoup those costs and what the cost of actually owning your own equipment is and how it all balances out.
And you know what? Well, uh, I'm just gonna add in a quick thing, because you said the townhouse one?
I think that, um, I, I, I think that there is something that they've got, but there is a stipulation, a union stipulation, stipulation on its use.
On the equipment, a union?
So like, there has to be a certain person, and it has to be done a certain way, which ends up being, um, it ends up that there is such a need that sometimes there has to be other methods of achieving that end. So if the district had one of its own, you would have many more options, and you would have, be able to, over a long run, save significant amount of money by doing that.
Okay, so is this the projection over here for the rentals, and has FFC gone through? To see?
Well, that's the trick with the, with the whole timeline, is that, um, these projects, these are what we are updating from, you know, when we talked about the capital process in the last meeting. This is what has manifest from that process, so FFC met on capital, but did not have this in front of them at that time. This has been available to the board on the dashboard coming into the meeting, but, you know, with the timeline didn't allow for that.
Just curious, what's the lifespan on, on these lifts?
Well, I mean, I, off the top of my head, I don't know, I can research that. Um, you know, most mechanical things, they're gonna be, you know, probably like a car, but I would, uh, I'll see if I can get that answer while we're, while we're talking this over.
This is something that, that Peter Staba needs, right?
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah, any of you who know Pete, you know, he's very, very um, conscious about funds and how he can do things more efficiently and, you know, or not, not so much he, but district, he's, he looks at how we can achieve things more efficiently. Um, and I've come to, to just really talk, trust just about everything, well, everything Pete has to say. You know, he's a great facilities director, and uh, when he looks at something, he lives here in Talon, so he's looking at it from how, you know, how he, he, we can save Talon some money and be more efficient, and so this is an example of that.
My concern, like, like I was just saying, though, if the town has one, I can't imagine that everybody's using an artillery, artillery lift on the same day. I just.
It's union issues, Ashley, and could be also liability.
Just by, like, I just think it's weird that a union has a stipulation on equipment. I just, I just never heard of, I just see, it makes no sense, but.
I think it could also be an insurance issue. Um, I mean, we could dig into it, but when you're looking at some large equipment like that, I would, I would, um, I don't know what the, what the contractual obligation would be with it, but I know that if you have uh, some sort of heavy equipment that you're loaning or renting or selling or borrowing, you need to have some sort of insurance coverage by the, the new user. There's also, if I'm understanding, there's licensing and training um, to authorize use of said equipment. So if we don't, if we don't have those proper people licensed and trained to authorize to use that equipment, the liability would be I would assume on the town, but I think we should dig into it, but I, it is, that JLG lift is um, a large machine, and you have to have special certification, AWG and forklift certification from the state. Um, it costs hundreds of dollars to certify a person to do that. Dr. Willett, if you'd like, I, I am authorized to drive such said equipment. I don't know if I'd trust myself.
Taking it for a test pin.
I don't, I don't really wanna be around, but I can. Uh, but my point is, is there's definitely certification for that, there's licensing, there's insurance, uh, and there's protocol for that type of equipment to use it. So that's, that's.
Thank you, Dana, because, you know, when, when I'm looking at this, I have no idea. I, I had a look at it, I'm like, what, what is this?
It's a very large, daunting, scary piece of equipment, um, that.
That you know how to use.
And if used inappropriately, it could be catastrophic.
I, I, I think it has, you know, it's got a, its lifespan is a, in an hours form, like a tractor kind of is, so, you know, I'm trying to figure that out right now.
And it's, yeah, it depends on the use as well, so, like you said, there, there's certain hours, and then there's certain hours that you have to uh, do maintenance on it, and like, you have to do oil changes, it's like you do a vehicle, I mean, different maintenances quarterly, month, annually, so on so forth, um, but some of those can last decades, some of them, depending on how much you use them, are re- replaced quickly.
Dana, maybe you could help us put up our um, our holiday lights.
That's correct, if you have the proper insurance.
Well, thank you, Dana, for all the extra information, because that is something that I clearly have no idea. Plor, do you have any other questions along with this? Okay, let's go to Jacob.
Okay, so I've got a few questions about um, items. I have one about the artillery lift, maybe I'll come back to that one. Um, so the first one I have is the front entry sidewalk concrete for TIS. Um, I believe in one of the supporting documents you gave us, there were two different replacement costs listed. I was just wondering what the price differential was upon those, and how long will each one of those options last?
Um, the main entry you're talking about, um, I'm trying to find the disaggregation of the one you're talking about. Which one specifically? Is it TMS, or I'm looking for, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the right one.
It's TIS, it costs thirty thousand dollars, according to your sheet.
Main entry?
Yeah.
You have the concrete? Okay, so let me try to share that, hold on one sec. I'm just trying to get these up as you ask. Okay, so here's the, here's the breakdown of the, the project for the main entry. And that's also available and will be posted in those links, people can actually see that before we officially post it. Um, so, your question, I'm sorry, was what specifically?
Yeah, so the last line of that project description, we recommend replacement with either new concrete or a hybrid system of concrete pads uh, with blah, 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 and I'm just kind of wondering, i- is there a price differential up on that, and what's kind of the lifespan? I just want to know whether thirty thousand dollars is a good accurate estimate, and, you know, what are we?
You, you'd want to know the lifespan of the work, like how, well, how long we would expect that to, to not need service in the future, like what span of time?
Yeah, or both different options. I'm just wondering if there's a better one, and which one's more expensive.
Okay. Um. I mean, other than the information I have here, I would have to research that further.
Okay.
Right now, I think, you know, he's saying we recommend the replacement of the concrete, whether the new concrete or a hybrid system and pads. Usually, he won't put two in here if, if there's, you know, if there's gonna, if one has too much of an advantage over the other, they're probably pretty similar. And so I, I think he's just, you know, in terms of lifespan, it's probably typical for concrete, but I'm off the top of my head, I'm not sure what a typical concrete lifespan would be, so I'll see if I can get that too.
All right, okay, um, my next question is about the bus parking lot at Talon Middle School. Um. I guess like, you know, if you need to replace it, you need to replace it, but I guess my question is, is that that area is kind of exclusively used by the bus company. Um, and I'm just wondering, has it ever been looked at in the contract about having to contribute to the upkeep of that spot? Um, because, because they're basically the only ones who use it. I'm just wondering if that's ever been considered?
Well, that, usually that is considered in um, in a contract, so when we supply, you know, certain things for them, like we have a bus yard, they don't have to rent one. So it's usually, we get a, uh, you know, that is usually considered in how much is charged overall for, for um, for a contract.
Okay, so we get some sort of discount, quote unquote, discount because of that? Okay. Yeah, and again, um, just to bring it back to the artillery lift, um, yeah, I, I still have a few concerns about it. Um, I think it would take about fourteen years for us to cover the costs, not including the maintenance costs. Um, I, I wish I knew a little bit more about how long the two to three thousand hours lasted. So I, I wish I had a little bit more information about that one.
Yeah, I mean, as I look, you know, I see five thousand hours as, as one of the things, but um, you know, as a piece of equipment, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know, so I would have to look. But I, I mean, what the bottom line for that one in terms of what we're doing is, I mean, we have our facilities director telling us and, you know, that these projects, for instance, are all ones that, you know, that we are incurring with this lift, and you know, he doesn't ask for stuff that, that he does not need or think that he would, you know, that would create an efficiency for us. He's, he's asking, because, because he does believe that's the case. So I'm not qualified to say that it isn't, you know, I think, I, I defer to the person who's got that experience. He is, he is our facilities director, and he is saying to us, this could be done more efficiently, and this, these projects, we could have saved some money on these projects, and over time, having these, this unit would make it a lot more efficient. And so, you know, that's, that's just, that, I guess, is where I would leave that particular question at the moment, is that we've got you know, our, our resident expert saying that this is the case. And those of you who know him, you know, he's not a director that doesn't, you know, roll up his sleeves. He's in the field every day, working his butt off alongside the other people. He's not in an office, uh, you know, sitting in an ivory tower. He's, he's in the trench. And you, you might, you know, even see him, you know, around this equipment doing these. In fact, you will, you know, see him. So he's, he's probably saving us money, just not by being the third facilities person and the director, you know, that we need. Um, so that's, I just, that's the period I'd put on that one.
Yeah, and I respect that. I'm not trying to bash him up for his role, it's just kind of our job as board members to review all these projects and give our thoughts on that. Um, again, it, it would be nice if we could have some more information on that, or, you know, with a tight deadline, but I did have some questions about that.
Yeah, I know, and I'm not suggesting you are. I'm simply saying that's, that's how I receive uh, his information typically.
Okay, that's all I have, Ash.
Uh, Griffin?
Um, okay, uh, I have a bunch, shocker. Um, I won't beat the artillery lift uh, question again, but my only thing would be, if the town does have one, my suggestion would be that we put the artillery lift off this for now, and we work with the town and see exactly what the issue would be of us to use it, because in essence, we're asking the town to buy us another one, and if they already have one, I'd like to see if there's something we can work out with the town for something that we can share with them. Um, so that would be my, my suggestion with the lift, is just kind of put that on hold for now. Um, couple of things, the grease trap and the stage curtains, to me, those don't seem like capital expenses. I kind of thought I would expect to see like the grease trap more as repairs and maintenance and um, the stage curtains just, you know, equipment or, or something along those lines. Um, I wouldn't expect to see those um, smaller dollar amounts on here. And um, my other question was about the track. Now, Dr. Willett, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the THS track, that does not include the turf, is that correct?
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, so, so we've got basically the TMS track and the THS track coming up within two years of each other? Who uses the TMS track? Does the, did the town use it for anything? I'm just wondering if that's something that we can, um, you know, that the town can, can kind of absorb some of that on their side, if it's more that Dana and people who like to run are using that. You know, obviously, I understand the high school track gets used by all of our athletics. I, I understand, I had a kid on cross-country, not cross-country, I'm sorry, yes, I did, cross-country and track at the middle school, so I do recognize that they use that, but they also use the high school track a lot. So I'm just concerned about us absorbing the whole hundred and forty for TMS. Um, because we do have to worry about the, um, turf field that's going to come up, I believe, in around the same time. Oh, gosh, actually, it's gonna come up sooner than the track, if I remember correctly now what we were saying. So those are my, my concerns about the, the track. I mean, I know that there's nothing we can do, we can't let the, the TMS one kind of just fall apart, you know, that's not the right answer either. But um, that would be my concern about the track, and um, that.
I mean, just, just to answer that one directly, before you move to the next, I, I, you know, the TMS track teams and cross-country and you know, the, basically, TMS with its three grades uses that track the way the high schools' four grades use the high school track. More or less, to, to give a, you know, short answer on that one. Um, so it's just the athletic track for that particular, you know, school, school, and, you know, so I know they do do a lot, and then we do have a lot of other uses for it with respect to the communities, um, you know, communities, teams, and rack and things like that, so.
All right, um, and then just the track at the high school. What is it? Probably ten years old?
It's up there too, yeah.
Um, was it installed incorrectly? So I guess my question is, do we have any recourse if there's like that significant buckling? Or is it just kind of our problem?
I have not heard that it was installed incorrectly. I know that they're looking at the buckling, but to this point in time, I have not heard that it was uh, done incorrectly.
Okay, I was just curious about that, because that, you know, obviously, it's similar track, I would imagine, at TMS, and. Okay, I was just curious about that, cause that, you know, obviously it's similar track, I would imagine at T M S and it's a lot more work to fix that one. It sounds like, cause of all the, um, I'm reading Mr. Staba's thing, the base components need to be replaced. That will result in a complete tear out and repair of these sections, so. Okay, and then just my last question, the special ed redesign. At first I kind of looked at this one and I was like, okay, is this really a want or a need? Now, from what you had said earlier, is this something that will kind of protect the privacy then of our special ed students?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's something that, um, that has been described to me as helping to keep instead of people having to constantly sort of. Go out and in and out and in and out and in, that people would more discreetly be able to, um, to, you know, to. Be a part of what needs to happen in these offices without that happening. But at the end of the day, you know, again, this is in front of the board for you to, to look at and you can ultimately decide what you want us to move forward with or not to the, to the town. But it's in there largely because there was a feeling that this would, um, for those who had to use this office, make it. A more comfortable and, you know, efficient and convenient way of doing it, so that they don't have to continue to, to kind of go out. And in, they can just be part of these two offices and not have to do that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I think I have one more question. So there's a lot of these things on the WHOA, I think, as you said, or the WHO list. Listed as high priority. No, a lot of them are classroom tech upgrades, science lab tech upgrades. With these being listed as high priorities, you know, those to me are direct education enhancements to our students. So as much as I understand the need for the artillery lift or the want of the artillery lift, I can't help but look at this bottom list with these purple things and see the high priority. And kind of feel like, are we not doing these? Should we be doing these sooner?
So the history of the, the history of the WHO, so to speak, um, is that when we've had conversations about these items with. Um, and this goes back, this is, this is historical, not everybody would probably realize this, but. The conversations we've had with the town over a span of time have been such that. While these have been something that there is a strong feeling was needed, the conversations with the town who ultimately have the final say. Were not that these things would be supported at the time that they were brought up. So every time, you know, for the time that we have presented this budget over the years. These items that are when opportunity allows, um, they just have not been something that the town was going to be in a position to bond for. Given all the other priorities that, uh, the town had. So they, they ended up in this purple zone over here on the right. Of being when opportunity allows, because compared to certain other things that the town also has, has critical priorities. They never really made it, you know, all the way in. And so, um, part of it is, you know, things like a grease trap. That, that either comes out of board of operations or it comes out of capital and. There can be arguments that doing such a thing in capital is, is a reasonable expense, because it does last for a certain number of years and it is a certain amount of money. And it will make sure that we don't have to pay larger amounts in maintenance later. So it's, you'll see that there are capital requests for things that are in the ten thousand or twelve thousand dollar range. Another example would be the stage curtains. They're moldy and nasty and twelve thousand could come out of it, but they are something that goes usually like longer than ten years. So those auditorium curtains do sort of, they do fall under a capital expense. And it's like a death by a thousand paper cuts. Every one of these little ten, you know, suppose, so to speak, little ten or twelve or fifteen. When you add them up, those are major budget increases for a board of ed's operating budget. And that does take away from English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, all, you know, all the things that you want to do for the kids. You know, so it's, it's not giving up things for children for, for a stage curtain. But still getting that stage curtain in there so that the moldy nasty one isn't still there. Um, you know, it's accomplishing that end, so. It is important on these small, you know, these so to speak, smaller items as they add up to have them in capital. And the ones that are when opportunity allows, they just have never really made it all the way. You know, because the other items, you know, were either easily, more easily done, because they're smaller. Or because they just didn't hold up against some of the other stuff that had to happen over time. So, you know, even some of the stuff that's in there now, um, you know, B G P and things like that, we've been able to, to get some things done that, that. Could be removed from that, um, and have been. But, uh, STEM and math enhancement things and, you know. Classroom tech upgrades, some of these things now, you know, when we reevaluate where we are after COVID, may even be able to come off of this. They're just, they're here from a standpoint of what has been here over the last few years that was pushed to that area of the capital budget, the WHO area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Let's go to Dana next.
Um, thank you, Ashley. Um, thank you, Dr. Willett. Um, a lot of the questions that I had written down have already, um, been hit. And I didn't know I was not on mute when I said I run the track, give my knee, I've gotta, gotta give my knees a break from the roads of Tallinn. But anyways, um, no, you, you really hit thoroughly, reviewed it and, uh, these requests. I, in, in my short time of knowing, uh, Mr. Saba, uh, he is a gem for the Tallinn Public School System. Just even on the building committee alone, uh, he's saved thousands of dollars, millions of dollars in regards to. Redirecting projects or redirecting something and, um, and putting in things in different buckets and so on and so forth. So, um, we are lucky to have Mr. Saba, uh, as our facilities and maintenance manager, um, here in town. As far as the artillery lift, um, I can get some more information, Dr. Willett, if you'd like, on the hours. Of what it would be for school use, town use versus construction use. But what I can tell you folks is for a ten K artillery, uh, artillery boom lift is sixty eight hundred dollars a month for rental. Plus fees and such, which is over eighty one thousand for twelve months, if we were to rent it for twelve months. So, uh, this is an eighty thousand dollar purchase through twenty twenty-two and be budging it accordingly. But, I mean, we obviously need to utilize our resources that are, um, money wisely. Now, there was a question about sharing with the town, Dr. Willett. Now, did you already go down that road?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, I think really to try to, to navigate these waters, um, two, two quick things. One, I think if you maintain these things well, you can get beyond six thousand hours. So, um, you know, I, I think that's, that's the, that's, that's the little that I know, but. You know, the reason it's here is because it's needed for the board.
Well, right, right.
Rather than kind of, and I'm not responding to or trying to cast any kind of stone in any direction, I'm just saying that. So when we talk about what, what's available to the town or in the town or with the town and, and, you know, and that kind of thing. You know, rather than get into the mud with all that, um, the reason it's here is because the board would benefit very greatly from this and likely save money in the long run.
Well, agreed. I mean, like I said, sixty eight hundred dollars a month for a relatively comparable piece of equipment, just to rent. So, um, utilizing that would probably be in our best interest and we're not using it in a full construction capacity. Where you'd be using it ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day, six, seven days a week. So the time span on that would probably be extended. But again, um, just my time working with, uh, Pete Saba. On the building committee and listening to, you know, how meticulous and detailed, even with his COVID supplies and budgeting for that and budgeting for. How to maintain the buildings during this pandemic and what supplies he needs, he is very fiscally responsible. And he's getting bare minimum what he needs. He is, he is acutely aware of, of budget constraints and such. So if, if, uh, Pete Saba says these are some of the things that we need, I mean, I, I do appreciate all the questions, because a lot of my questions were answered, so thank you, the team there. I, I understand where, where he's coming from and I, and I will yield to the respective, uh, you know, um, decision of our expert in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Um, let's go to Rainey.
Um, yes, I just would like to start out by saying that. I can appreciate that Pete Staba spent a lot of time on this list and nothing that I say is a commentary about his work ethic, his knowledge or anything around that. Simply a question, I kind of agree with Griffin about maybe putting the lift on hold till we can do a little bit more research. On whether the town has one, whether we can share it, what are the obstacles to sharing it? Can we buy one together if they don't have it? I, I feel like, you know, I'm looking at the list and I'm saying that, you know, server upgrades on the high list, you know, whenever. And here we are, we're very reliant on, um. You know, technology and all of this, that, that seems like that would be something that maybe. We, we would want to move up on the priority list if we could maybe do something around the lift perhaps. I, I don't know, I just. You know, I'm kind of concerned about some of these other things that. And, and I do feel like as we, as we move forward, you know, I don't understand why the town and the, and the board of ed wouldn't be striving to work together and sharing, you know. Expenses where we can, especially on something that's expensive. You know, if you go back three years, we're spending roughly six thousand dollars a year if you, if you average it out. And, you know, thank you to Dana for some additional information. It sounds like we're then going to need licensing and. Maintenance and, and all kinds of potentially other costs that are be associated with that. So I, I think it's something we really need to think about. The amount of usage and really, is this something that we can and should be thinking about sharing with the town? On whatever level we can. Um, and then I, I think my other questions were also answered. But I do, I do think too, that some of the stuff around the tracks and stuff like that, I mean, it is very costly to keep them up and just. I, I'm sure people are researching all the time how to, how to better keep that under control or can we do it some other way? And, and it just, it maybe is the nature of the beast, but, um. Anyway.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think those are excellent points. I, I want to make it clear that a statement in support of Peter Staba is not a suggestion that the B O E. That he lacks B O E support. Um, simply that, um, that there are many reasons why something makes it on a capital list. And at the end of the day, the town decides regardless of what you move forward to the town. The town decides what ultimately is accepted onto that or not. So this is here because, um, of all of the dynamics involved with this particular thing. Um, and so it wouldn't be here otherwise. And so certainly we, uh, you know, we can not include it. But, um, but even if you did include it, um, it would go up the, the ladder, so to speak, and it could be knocked down on the town side. So that conversation will likely happen regardless. Um, but if it's not, if it's not on here, it doesn't have any chance of making it in there probably. So having it on here just gets that conversation to happen on that side of the fence, so to speak, and those questions will probably come up. And those answers will likely manifest a conversation on that. As far as server upgrades, sometimes some of those WHO things, you know, um, we're writing grants right now that we're trying to achieve some of those WHO items. So something can sometimes be nested over there, because we might be able to achieve it otherwise when the opportunity allows. So it's not, it's not whatever, it's more like when opportunity allows.
I need, it's whenever, I'm like.
Sometimes we nest it there, because, uh, if I can get a grant for, you know, two hundred fifty thou, uh, two hundred fifty laptops, then we might be, we might, we don't know. But we might be able to achieve it that way, you know?
Okay, well, as long as we're, I, I just, that was, you know, it's obviously not clear from this list that that's, you know, maybe another way that we're addressing it. So that's good to know.
Sure.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Rainey. Let's go to Kate.
I just have a, um, a quick. Comment really. I, I heard Jessica say loud and clear that we, we should, um, depend on the experts to tell us what they need. And so I just wanted to restate that, you know, um, and I, I, um, thinking about what Dr. Willett said about. Finding grant money, you know, it seems like that's how we want to budget sometimes. We gotta find money other way, other places. We're not willing sometimes to say, yep, this is what we need. And we're willing to fight for what we need. So I'm just curious, like when we're going to believe our experts, kind of a general question. Thank you, Dr. Willett and all of your staff.
Oh, I am unmuted. I thought I was gonna mute myself. Karen?
Um, yes. I just had a couple of things, because, um, Dr. Willett kind of filled in. Some of my stuff already. Um, I was just gonna say about the, just special ed rooms as far as. Kind of just thinking about perspective and I guess if that was my child, um, that. You know, had to utilize those rooms, I would certainly appreciate, uh, the privacy and whatever else. Their feeling that they need for the students, um, that utilize those rooms. As far as the track, um, you know, it doesn't last forever. They have to be resurfaced. So I'm just wondering if that's, you know, we, we're seeing, are we seeing? I don't want to call it damage, but are, are we seeing issues because it's past its useful life kind of thing and. It's just ti, it's overtime. Um, and then also, um.
Yeah, I, I think it's way over frankly. It was two thousand two or two thousand three, so that was done before I was there and.
Right.
So it, um, it is not, it is never, it has not been resprayed or resurfaced. And typically that is something that you want to routinely do for rubberized services, surfaces. So, um, so it's, it's overdue.
Okay, so I guess that's my point. When we have not maintained something the way. Timeliness should have been taken care of, um, then this is what happens. So, um, I will also just say, um, I've only known Peter to be very thorough, um, since he's been hired. Um, and I'm talking about from historical knowledge here, because I was on the board when he was hired. When Peter was hired, he completely overhauled, uh, our facility needs. He created huge binders of everything. Capital facility related, um, in, in explicit detail. And doing that and the way he is so thorough has saved us a lot of money over the years. And, um, I can also speak from experience from our, uh, previous. Facilities director who was, um, with us a very long time. And, you know, people have different philosophies on how to take care of things. And when you're fixing things with Band-Aids for a long time, it costs money to make up for that. And in the long run, it costs you more money instead of taking care of something properly. So. I just, you know.
Yeah, just, just to, um, just to, can I?
I know he's put a lot of work into what, how he does his job. So I just, you know, it's not, this is not meant to be, you know, rah rah Peter. But I just want people to understand that he's our expert for a reason and he has put in a lot of time and effort. Into making sure things are done correctly.
Yeah, you, you have a great team in Tallinn. I, I do want to make sure I, I, I say that, you know, the previous facilities director, um, just, just to make a comment on that. You know, Pete is an amazing, exceptional individual. The previous, uh, director had been around for a long time and. Part of the, the conundrum that, that, that they faced at that time was that for a very long span of time, there was not a lot of fun. was that for a very long span of time, there was not a lot of funding for capital projects. So, you know, um, they would ask for, it was a very different process. This is a much more detailed, much more data centered, much more, you know, information intensive process you're looking at right now. The previous one, because there was really not a lot of money allocated every year. You're talking maybe 50 if they were lucky. Maybe a hundred, but a lot of times there was not a lot of funding available. So the process, you know, didn't really have as much detail or information because there just wasn't that much available to give. So that's why, um, you know, Steve Warbner did a great thing by getting the, getting a, uh, you know, a, uh, you know, a bond out there, it was 9.6 million at one point to address. And you see there was the, you know, residuals of that on here because that's part of the, the bonded projects, uh, over that span of time that, um, you see the final, final projects of that, that span, that, uh, that initiative. But, uh, that was put out there because it had been so, uh, woefully unfunded for a long time. They needed to recover. So you're still seeing the, the recovery from a very long span of time where the funding was not available. Uh, and the previous director had to deal with there not being a lot of funding. So just, just to make sure, you know, I, I, we, it doesn't look like, uh, you know, I'm disparaging one because I'm lifting up and
No, and I'm not throwing
I'm not saying you aren't Karen, I just want to be clear for myself. I'm not, I, I am saying
No, I know.
A span of time
I want to be clear that the situation back then was not conducive to being able to take care of things properly.
Right, right.
You know, it wasn't all his fault, but you know, when you do, when you start down that path, it becomes normal. And it became normalized and it's not how you maintain your, your facilities in your town, so.
Right.
Huge help.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, I don't know if I had questions in there, but, but yes, the track was the big thing. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, I believe at this point everyone has had a turn to talk about it. We still have REF to go through and it's already 11:00. Let's, because you do need to vote on this, correct, Dr. Willett? That's why the, um,
Yeah, the, the proposed motion is a motion to accept, approve the BOE capital budget request for fiscal year 22 through 26 and authorize superintendent to provide it to the town manager, manager for consideration. Just keeping in mind that that does not mean that these get funded. That's just us passing it up the line and then they have the conversation about it too. So, um, you know, you could, you could motion to do that subtracting certain items, you know, with the exclusion of motion to approve, you know, the same terminology and then just with the exclusion of. And I would just adjust that. But, uh, keep in mind that you're not deciding that this is spent. You're merely letting it pass to the next level and then they have a conversation about it. And sometimes that's good. It needs to happen, you know, at that level. And this, this kind of thing drives that conversation. So, um, so that's all. That's just the two cents on that.
Can I, can I just ask a quick, like, there seems to be concern about the artillery lift?
That would be the one thing, yeah.
Because we can move this along and since the town council has to look at it anyway, that question can go to them and, and Scott Lappin about, um, you know, what they have for equipment and what the actual issue is. And let them, you know, talk to us about that. Send it along and then have the conversation.
Yeah, I think that that's fine. Because like you, you were saying, if it just moves to town council, then town council can either say on there and we can have that conversation, like, let's do this together, let's do this now. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board of Ed capital budget request for the fiscal year 22 through, um, the fiscal year 26 and authorize the superintendent to provide it to the town manager for consideration.
So moved to Kate HB, oh, Kate HB second.
Okay, so Lisa, I think you got, I guess, uh, Plor did it and then Kate second. And then we will, um, I think we had a discussion. I don't think anyone means anything else. We'll do, um, a roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Jacob?
Uh, abstain.
Can you, Plor?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Griffin? Griffin, you are muted.
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore, uh, Dr. Willett, you can submit that to the town manager.
Thank you. So that will be happening tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay.
Ashley, can I just say one thing? Um, Dr. Willett, can you just make sure that we have that discussion with the town on the lift that they already have? I just want to make sure that that conversation gets started. Um, and we try to not ask them for another one if we can do something with what they have. Thank you.
Do you know that they have one, Christine?
I believe Dr. Willett said that.
I, I'm under the impression that the town has access to one. Yeah, but, but I don't, I, I think that this is a good conversation to have. And moving it up the line will have that, allow that conversation to have, happen. So I think that's good.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's do the, um, ERF request for the Chromebooks.
So the next, and I think last item here is the ERF. Uh, as I had alluded to before, the, um, you know, we, we did receive and are in the process of receiving a number of different grants. Uh, we have a lot of devices that will be achieved by those, uh, grants, uh, in the, in the line of 800 to 900. So we're, we're being very successful in that way. And recently received yet another grant to distribute Comcast vouchers to families. So we are actively pursuing every single funding opportunity we can get our hands on. And including writing the title grants right now. So, um, we're just, uh, this is a very busy time of year for that. And so we've, we've tapped about everything that I think we can, we can do here. And, um, what is left here, um, to achieve what we had discussed was that, you know, we will need to tap into the ERF funds, uh, which were set aside for that purpose as well. The ERF funds are there for technology. The board does have, uh, and has, has wisely set aside funds and can access them. These do not need any other approval than your approval at this point because they're in the educational, the funds are there in the educational reserve fund account. And, uh, that's already from the prior years, you know, been, uh, approved by and, uh, has gone through the audit process. So the money that is there is accessible for this purpose and would just needs your blessing from the standpoint of this, this agenda item. So through existing resources, we've had over 636 Chromebooks. Uh, the district needs an additional 392 to provide the students the needed tech. And then through the existing resources, we've gotten over 562 Lenovo laptops. And that includes the grants, so on. So the district would need an additional 234. So right now, this is the breakdown of what's needed and what's left to achieve the objective of getting the three through 12. To have the devices that, uh, that we've wanted them to have so we can not only get through COVID, but also, you know, implement what's needed technology wise, uh, moving forward. So a lot of other districts have, uh, gone this way too. We're, we're in good company. Um, and this is an extension of the conversation that we've, that we've already had on that. Just adding the, uh, the final numbers to it based on what we've been able to acquire for grants and other, you know, other sources. We do, uh, I did also put together and had, um, a replacement cycle figure put in. So in 2023, we would not need to do any replacement cycle until 2023. Then 2023, fiscal year 2023, we would need to start looking at having that, uh, replacement cycle of about 41,000 for Chromebooks and 75,000 for laptops if we were going to continue that at the high school. And roughly that, those two costs together would be your, your overall replacement cycle if we did that in all, um, you know, in those two grades that way. So that's just a general, you know, um, general figure for that. So you had it. And just another piece of information is that the insurance plan would give parents the opportunity to, you know, buy into insurance for these devices so that they would not have to incur the full cost if they, if there was some damage to them. So many parents do avail themselves of this. It does turn out being something positive both for the parents and the district when you have people, you know, um, opting in to the insurance. So at the end of the whole piece here is the proposed motion, which would allow us to engage in what we had talked about prior.
Um, I see Kate has her hand up, so let's go to Kate.
Um, I'd like to move to approve the use of $216,000, uh, $252 of the educational reserve fund to purchase 392 Chromebooks and 234 laptops.
Discussion, um, if anyone has anything to say, you can raise your blue hand at this time. Uh, Griffin?
I have a quick question. I'm Dr. Willett. So the laptops, um, are you expecting them to last longer than three years? Or the hope, I should say?
Um, they, they can, yeah. I mean, I've had, I've had laptops that lasted at least that long. So, you know, right now, obviously, we'd have to see what our, what our historical is on that, like how it plays out, but, but I think we'd be, we would be in a good place for the next couple of fiscal years. And, and that's why we've got it out to fiscal year 2023 before we move on that.
Thank you.
Okay, back to Kate.
Yeah, I'd just say that this is our, an opportunity for the, um, Board of Ed to actually show that, that we are supporting our kids by passing this. That's all I want to say about this.
Any other member at this time before we do the roll call vote? Okay, um, let's start with Karen.
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Plor?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye, absolutely.
Sorry, my dogs are crazy. Um, I as well, uh, therefore this passes unanimously, um, so Okay, at this time, um, we will have the public participation of two minutes. Um, it must be limited to the agenda and when you speak, if you could, please, um, list your name and your address. And we will go from there and we will have, uh, Jacob do the timing. If anyone would like to care, to speak at this time, please raise your hand. It's a late night and not everybody's continuing on here with us. So going once, going twice, sold to no one. Let's go to, um, the points of information. If anyone has anything that they would like to say at this time. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, really quick, um, I was just thinking about our previous discussion about our committees. Communications only has two people on it. Negotiations has three. Curriculum committee has four. I have not been able to have my communications meeting twice because, you know, I, I understand Tony's got a tough job and he gets stuck sometimes, but, you know, I just think we need to be cognizant of, you know, Jacob asking to be on negotiations when we already have three people. Yet I'm struggling to have a communications meeting. And I think we need to be cognizant of doing a little bit reflection on having a more evenly distributed committees.
Okay. Anyone else at this time? Uh, Dana?
Sorry, um, we didn't have a discussion about the meeting time. Were we just acknowledging that tonight and discussing it next time? Was that?
Right, that was the first read.
Right, so we're not discussing at all tonight.
Yeah, though it was the first read, just go through everything and then we can have another discussion. Okay, um, anyone else? Uh, Jacob?
Yeah, real quick, um, just going back to some of the curriculum committee discussions. Um, I just wanted to clarify that I was able to make that meeting because I was out sick. Uh, I had a concussion that week, so I was not, I was kind of out of commission for that whole week. Um, I talked about it with Kate, but I just want to make sure that that's in the minutes, wasn't trying to be a derelict of my duty.
Um, I do, I can give you some quick, uh, points to go to the order, just really quick answers to some of the questions. I did get some answers. The, the artillery lift is about 10 to 15,000 hours. So it'd be out 20 years of use potentially if we maintain it well. Concrete varies on install, so a poorly installed concrete is about 10 years, but you can get 25 to 30 years out of well-done concrete. So that, that factors in with ice melt and if you don't seal it well and, you know, environmental factors. But if you do seal it well and you take care of it, you're looking at a, you know, a good 25 years that could, that could last too. So sorry, just circling back to the answers, wanted to get them before the end of the meeting.
That's perfect. Anyone else? Are we good? Okay, um, Dr. Willett, if you could, uh, walk us through some of the future stuff and then we can
Sure, um, as you, as, as you've noted, uh, that we will be, uh, and I'll be doing a presentation on the cultural responsive education efforts the district has made. Perhaps we could get that in for the next board meeting, you know, um, or the one thereafter. Uh, I'll be talking to, to leadership committee on that to see what their feelings are. Um, school rounds and tours would like to keep this going. Uh, we did do TIS already, so I should amend that, but, um, but there are some, you know, great things to show the, the board and the instructional rounds are a great way to do it. Mental health, we do need to still do that presentation and talk about it. There's a number of things that, um, that we can throw out there and that would be apropos considering what the town's doing. And, um, again, these other items, Portrait of a Graduate, we've committed to it in the board goals. So that will be, uh, something moving forward again this year and, uh, something the board, I will be presenting a couple of times to you. Um, and ultimately, uh, the other things on here have been on here for a little while and we'll circle around to them as soon as maybe we come up for air out of COVID, I would imagine. Such as, you know, regionalization and, you know, things like that.
Okay. Plor, I see your hand is up.
Just quickly, um, based on the discussion we had tonight with Jessica, um, and the emails regarding things going on the agenda, perhaps Dr. Willett, for the next agenda, we can put on those requests under future so that we can talk about them as a board under this heading, uh, to prioritize things. Just an idea.
No, no, it's not, not a bad idea. I just want to make sure I understand entirely what you're saying.
So the email said we got requesting agenda items be added. I think it wanted, they wanted in, um, this particular meeting, uh, which obviously was jam-packed already. If we put those requests here, they're public for the whole entire board and then we can prioritize or discuss, you know, where we want to put things.
Okay, uh, let me discuss that with the board chair. There are some procedural elements that we probably want to talk about in leadership, but absolutely, you know, with respect to when, uh, you know, when certain numbers ask for things. So let's maybe talk about it there and then definitely.
Okay.
Whatever, wanted to.
Yeah, because we need to update this anyways because we still keep having our, uh, approval of minutes under approval of agenda too. So next meeting, it's going to be up on the screen, Dr. Willett. I'm putting it up. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jacob, Mari, I move that we adjourn the October 14th Board of Ed meeting at 20:00 PM.
Christina, Plor, second.
Any discussion? I believe that we have any and now everybody's max boxes moved, so let's go to roll call vote. Uh, Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Plor?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Griffin? Griffin, did you say aye?
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
I as well, therefore we will adjourn at 11:20. Have a great night, everybody. Get some sleep.